Just, just one minute. Sorry folks, we'll be one more minute. All right, we'll roll it. Okay, AGP, we'll just get rolling and get our fifth council member here in a minute. Welcome back everyone. We are at our February 10th city council meeting, back from recess, and we're moving on to new business. So, item D1 is the 2014 annual water report and allocation of the 2015 water equivalency units. That report is by our community development manager and public works director. So that'd be Scott Graham and Rob Blivik. Rob, you want to open that up?
Yeah, I think I'll do, for the most part, and then Scott will be here for questions that we might have. And I apologize, I did not get the ordinance to counsel ahead of this meeting. Ordinance 266, I think we talk about in the staff report, but I think in actuality it's 265, which has been codified in the Morro Bay municipal code, Chapter 13, Point 20 is what that is. It's what we're complying with in this report. So... Have a slide there that can't really read because there's too many words on it. But this is the recommendation from the staff report. Basically, to allocate a mix of residential and commercial units. And residential units would be prioritized based on the first come, first served basis and the priorities in the general plan, local coastal plan policies. Authorize 130% of the residential water equivalencies, or 65 WEUs, to commercial and industrial projects. And not to preclude rolling over unused water allocations, although we've never faced this need to roll over unused water allocations. And that we continue our offset program by requiring that new WEUs offset, or water equivalency units that are offset, be offset on a two-to-one basis by retrofits or by paying a $2,900 per WEU in lieu fee. So, for a typical single-family home, that would result in, if they chose the WEU in lieu fee, a $5,800 charge because it's to be offset on a two-to-one basis. That two-to-one basis is set in Chapter 1320 where it talks about water retrofits. A little bit as far as context goes, as we all know, we're in historic drought. We've been in a drought for quite some time. We have reduced allocations through the state water project. City does have a drought buffer. We usually use stored water, and they're all local water supplies. So I'll go through these one at a time. Historic drought, last year Governor Brown declared drought and requested that Californians reduce their water usage by 20% statewide. We in coastal California saw that as a bit difficult to do because coastal California conserves more than the more inland portions of the state that may or may not be metered. So, Morro Bay is doing quite well, I believe. We're already at the low end of the water usage and we've conserved 8% last year. So I think that was very good, even with an increase in commercial water sales because of an uptake in tourism businesses this summer. Reduced state water project allocations. When the state water project came on in the 90s, I think it was seen as the, you've heard me say this before, as the endless, infinite water supply for the state. And we know that's not the case anymore due to not only drought conditions, but even before this longer-term drought. The difficulty in transporting that water through the Sacramento-San Joaquin River Delta area and its environmental impacts have reduced those state water project allocations. Last year, we started out at zero. New state water coming south of the Delta. The state Department of Water Resources increased that allocation to 5% last year. So we got 5% of our total. This year, we've started out with a 15% allocation for state water, which... Where are my notes on this? Of course, I didn't bring them. And I probably shouldn't do math in a public meeting. So, we're looking at about, with our drought buffer, 500 acre-feet of water this year and having to pull about 600 acre-feet of water out of our stored water in San Luis reservoir. So that kind of leads us up to drought buffer. In the early 2000s, along with its state water allocation, or late 90s, the city purchased drought buffer, or insurance policy, to provide a guaranteed supply of state water should the water be reduced due to drought. So the city purchased 2,290 acre-feet of drought buffer that goes along with our 1,300, 13 acre-feet of state water allocation. So to determine how much state water we get on any given year, you add those two numbers together and multiply by the allocation percentage, and that gives you how much delivery we will get of new state water coming through the Delta. So, for this year, we anticipate about 500-plus acre-feet of new state water coming down and pulling 600 out of our storage. The water stored that we have is in San Luis reservoir, which is south of the San Joaquin River Delta. You can see it as you're driving up and down I-5 near Highway 152, that large reservoir. It still looks like it has a lot of water in it, but I think they're under 20% capacity. But it is such a large reservoir, that's still quite a bit of water. Local water supplies. The city has water, local groundwater in the Choro groundwater basin. We have a number of wells in two locations out in Choro Valley. And the problem with Choro Valley is that's limited due to stream flows. So, when Choro Creek's not flowing above 1.4 CFS cubic feet per second, we are not allowed, per our water rights permit with the State Water Resources Control Board, to pump any water unless we apply for an emergency petition. And we'd have to show a very dire straits to invoke that emergency petition. We also have about 550 acre-feet of permitted water in the Morro Basin. And that water is somewhat problematic to use because of the nitrate levels in that water, groundwater supply. And to use that water, we pump that through our, the low-pressure side of our desal plant, or the brackish water, RO side, to remove nitrates and make that water usable by the community. So, recapping, 2014, we used 1,141 acre-feet of state water. 41 acre-feet of...
Rob, can you speak into the mic, please? I know it's hard, sorry.
Yeah, I should have printed this out, obviously. 41 acre-feet of Morro well water. And we saw a reduction in 83 acre-feet from 2013. Our overall water consumption was 103 gallons per person per day, down about 8%. That 103 gallons per person per day is an overall average. So it factors in some community use. If you just take out residential use, we're looking at around 64 gallons per person per day in the community of Morro Bay, just residential use. So very good water conservation efforts. In 2014, the city issued 23, almost a half, WEUs out of the 115 allocated. And those were distributed between four commercial, eight single-family, and the remaining multifamily. Those multifamily WEUs were mainly, if not entirely, for the senior housing project that is under construction that we saw at the groundbreaking. We have asked council to consider bringing this ordinance back for consideration. The timing of when we are required to report per the ordinance doesn't really reflect reality of when we get the data from the variety of sources that we get data from. We're, per ordinance, we need to bring this to Plining Commission by December, City Council by January. Here we are in February. We usually get the data by the end of January from the state and from CCWA. So we're trying to figure out when the best timing-wise would bring that. We kicked around the idea of mid-year might be good to allocate for the following year. We were six months ahead and people can plan for, if there are reductions in allocation, given that, that six months lead time. If we were to drop our allocations to zero today, it might influence how people had planned their development projects in Morro Bay. And that really concludes my report. You know, we've had some questions from council about, you know, do we need to look at, you know, allocating no WEUs this year because of the drought situation? With our water portfolio, it's difficult to predict because contractually, we have water for build-out. Now, I don't, you know, know the long-term viability of state water project, but if I were to ask DWR whether we're going to get state water or not, they're going to tell me, yes, of course you're going to get state water at some level. They've talked about only reducing down to the minimum flow, but still providing health and safety water. So that would equate to 55 gallons per person per day. I think with our stored water, we have at least a year lookout of when we may need to impose some sort of reductions in our WEU allocations. So as we get nearer the end of that stored water and don't have a viable backup, that would be when we would want to look at that. We also have a desal plant, brackish water, RO. We've operated that sparingly, in agreement with coastal, until we get the outfall in wells completely permitted. We let them know when we're going to, we have an agreement to let them know when we're going to operate it. And they are, as they're processing our permit, satisfied with that management. We anticipate that we will be going before coastal sometime this year to finalize that permit activity. Don't have a date yet. We're still going, still going back and forth over some issues with project description. And they've had a few questions. And I think the latest round is the balls in our court to review from our consultant, some project changes. That's really all I have for the staff presentation. I'll let Scott have this opportunity, if he wants to add anything. Or if not, we're here to answer questions.
I think I'd just be happy to answer questions if you have them.
Great, Scott, thanks. I'll turn it back for questions. So we'll get into questions from council at this point before we open it up for public comment, and then we'll bring it back for discussion. And I'll just start off with a couple of questions. Thanks for the thorough report. And we went through this last year at a level where we kind of took a pause. And we said, let's, you know, send this through the Public Works Advisory Board, evaluate, you know, how are we going to deal with an offset program? We went through that, had great input, and great work from staff to get through that. So largely, that work and that two-to-one offset, we're seeing tonight. And I guess my question is that, so we saw a reduction in our, I think we're at 1,183 acre-feet of water use, so we're down from previous year. And so my question is, are we able to allocate our water equivalency units and maintain our water usage where it's at? Or are we going to be increasing that water usage by adding those or allocating for the water equivalency units?
It's difficult to guarantee how people will use their water resources. We're not in such a draconian level of water conservation that we are tracking everybody's, well, we are tracking everybody's water use because we send them a bill for it. So we do track everybody's water use. But we are not sending out, closely observing their water use. That was just my preface to say that, yes, I believe we do have the resources to allocate, given that we have a two-to-one offset program. And even if somebody pays the in-lu fees and doesn't offset their water, we're looking to roll out some incentive programs so that those folks that want to voluntarily do retrofits, the in-lu program is to fund those offsets. So, we're going to kick it off this spring. And I think we're going to try for the low-hanging fruit first, a rain barrel program. Although, doing it in spring, we're not going to get much benefit until next winter. But it'll seed the appetite of the community to do more for... And we envision, you know, gray water programs. Somebody wants to, you know, fund a gray water program, we'd make a proposal. So we're working on that right now, on what our application process is going to be so we can roll that out this spring.
Okay, great. I think that's all I have for right now. Appreciate that. Matt, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. First of all, I like the list of incentives. I think that goes so far beyond just a low-flow toilet, I think, in the past year and a half. There's not enough houses to put enough toilets in. So those incentives will go a long way. Now, but one question I had, we now have an offset program from one-to-one to two-to-one. And I think, and I think it was, might have been something that Noah had said at one time. Instead of going to the, you know, more draconian point of saying, there's no WEUs for your given water usage, can we make an offset program higher? Three-to-one? Four-to-one?
Well, the code sets a minimum standard of that two-to-one. I would, I think council has the authority to set an offset higher than that.
The reason I ask that is because looking at the WEUs that are in process of being used for the family, multifamily, and business, I mean, that's keeping business going in terms of the construction world, and that we don't necessarily kill that part of the economy. And so if we do, if the drought does get worse, you're saying we could do that. So, okay, that's good. My next thing is, we have the power of shutting off the offset program at any time, the WEU program at any time, correct?
As we did last year, council allocated WEUs and asked this to come back to them later on in the year. That's when we instituted the retrofit program. And just want to point out about the retrofits, that's not an all-inclusive list. If there's a creative architect or building designer that has something else in mind, propose it to us. We'll look at, provide the calculations, propose what you're going to do, and we'll look at any creative ideas that somebody has to save water. It was not meant to be, it has to be on this list.
Well, that's good to know because that was my question. Because, you know, talking to the few builders I know, they're saying, wow, I know in the past 20 years, at times, given a drought, we can really kill the building trade here in Morro Bay. And so if we offer that offset program with different types of incentives and afford different technologies, that's good to know. Okay, thank you, that's all my question.
And just one little piece of background, why the two-to-one? That was put into the code to anticipate errors in calculation and just to make sure that there's a factor of safety on the water savings. So, you know, you're offsetting your water use and you're basically providing that additional WEU offset to accommodate for errors in calculation.
Thanks, Matt. Christine?
Okay, great. I look forward to discussing this because we did take a long time with it last year. So I'm just get kind of excited to get to discussion. So I'll go through questions very quickly. And I apologize, I didn't send this question in advance, which I'd like to give you a heads-up. But I think you can manage it. Page three of the staff report, we talk about something else that, another focus of the city, which is found in our housing element. So the last line under water allocation mix on page three, and then moving into page four, talks about Morro Bay's fair share of housing will be 155 residential units. And that is between the years, this is in our general plan housing element, that we just, I believe it's been passed coastal and it's approved. Everyone, maybe not coastal, who had to see it?
HCD, HCD. It is, it's approved, adopted, accepted, in place.
Okay, so it's a law now. So from, so in 2014 to 2019, housing element indicated that we would, our fair share of housing would be 155 residential units. Just, that's in here for a reason in the staff report? And if you could just elaborate on why that's in here and any kind of connection you can make to WEUs?
It's because the general plan policies is that those types of units would be receiving their allocation first, I believe.
That's correct.
Okay, so if we don't have any WEUs due to, say, a drought condition, how does that impact our housing element?
If we have zero to allocate, zero gets built, we can't allocate what we don't have. If there's not the water resource there to build, there's other reasons why we couldn't approve building.
Okay, gotcha. And then... So moving forward, the question that I think we're looking for tonight is, this is a repeat of where the council got to last year. There's been no change in the policy, except you're asking for us to alter the schedule of when it appears before council, am I correct?
Yes, and clarification on the $2,900 per WEU. When this was rolled out last time, the intention was that would be multiplied by two. But it wasn't clear in all the discussion that you didn't just have to come in and pay $2,900. That's $29 per WEU that you offset. So, $5,800 per typical residential, new residential home. And you only need a WEU if you need a new, if there's never been a water meter there, so...
Okay, so then, your table one talks to us about, last year, we changed the two-to-one, went from one-to-one to two-to-one, correct?
Yeah.
And we can see here very clearly how many people took advantage of that. So it's, so we have eight new residential units in the single-family area, right?
Actually, there was only one payment of in-lu fees because the resolution established a grandfathering in of those projects that were already in the permit. So we only had one project that came in that was approved after the resolution went into effect. So we haven't seen the full effect of the offset program yet. We will this year.
Okay, okay, great. I might have another question, let me just check my note. No, I'm great, thanks.
Thanks, Christine. John?
Thank you, Rob, for comprehensive presentation and a comprehensive write-up also. Just maybe a couple of quick questions for you. It appears like we've done a reasonable job beyond expectations for this year in terms of water reduction in Morro Bay residentially. I heard you say, you know, with the government, Governor mandating 20%, getting 8% here is significant.
Yes, I believe so.
And I noticed your best practices in terms of benchmarking for building, et cetera. But if, again, I had to narrow it down to, you know, if I came to you and said, gosh, you know, what are the absolute three things I could do in my house right now? Not knowing my house, obviously, but, but three things that I could do to reduce significantly my water consumption or use for the year, what would that be?
The vast majority of water used residentially is outdoor water use. So look at what type of landscaping that you may have and look at other ways to irrigate that. So, rain barrels, gray water, that sort of thing, or change the plant type. Perhaps not look at the large lawn area. Indoor water use, it's a little bit more challenging to save water. So, a lot of water gets used while we're waiting for our water heater to deliver that water to the back bedroom or the back bathroom. Hopefully not the back bedroom. So, you know, point of use, instant hot water heaters are great, but they come at a price, a pretty significant price. So, maybe we're all not ready to change those out. But, you know, we can all get a five-gallon bucket at Miners, put that in the shower, collect that water, and use that for irrigation. That does save a lot of water. I mean, we can get down to very low water usage. There was a resident of San Luis County that had a campaign going on about surviving on a gallon of water a day that was quite interesting and to see how she did that. I don't suggest that, right at this point now, for most citizens.
And as a business owner, I'll ask the same question. And as a business owner, I'll ask the same question. And obviously, it varies on type of business. I totally understand that. But in general, as a non-restaurant business owner, what might those top two water-saving issues be for me?
For commercial, it's, and perhaps office-type or retail, where you don't have a lot of water use, it becomes more challenging. And then you may have to do, you know, some sort of plumbing retrofit, you know, waterless urinals, you know, not all businesses actually even use urinals, the ultra-low flush toilets. There's not a whole lot of water to save when you get down to, you know, one or two fixture units in a business. But it can always, you know, you can always work on saving a little bit, washing your hands, shutting the water off while you're soaping up, turning it back on to rinse. There's little things that add up. And there's a link on the city's water conservation webpage that'll send you to people that are much smarter than I am, that have come up with many, many different ways to save water around the home and business. You know, restaurants are a big challenge, because a lot of their water is dishwashing, and it's hard to save water, dishwashing. That not, passing out a cup or a glass of water when you ask for it, is really not saving that glass of water. It's saving the dishwashing water that is used to wash that glass. So that is really, you know, that's in our existing water conservation requirements is not to, you know, a glass of water is not offered unless asked for in restaurants. We've limited irrigation to two days a week, odd-even type of system in town. Shouldn't be hosing off hardscape unless it's for health and safety issues. Use a broom if at all possible. You know, things like that really save, good housekeeping practices do save water.
And that website for our audience is?
Well, if you go to the city's website, morro-bay.ca.us, and click on the water conservation, it'll, there's a couple of websites that are linked to that for water conservation. Waterwise Gardening, Save Our H2O, I think is one of them. And there's a, there might be a third one there, too, that I'm not remembering what the URL is for.
And my last question is, since we don't have, in essence, water police, as good citizens, do you have any examples of best practices of how to be a water enforcement officer for your neighborhood?
You can call the Public Works Department at 772-6261 is our general line. And if you can navigate the auto attendant, you'll get to water issues. You can do a let us know on the city's website to let us know about water issues. A lot of times when we see those complaints, it's not because somebody's doing it maliciously. It's their irrigation valve may be stuck on. They're an out-of-the-area property owner and just don't know. Very few times is it somebody just, I don't care, I don't care what the water costs, I'm going to use as much as I want, and I want this, not acre of green lawn, because I don't think we have that here, but this 1,000 square feet of green lawn.
Thank you for the great education. I appreciate it.
Thanks, John. Noah?
Yeah, thank you. Just reading this, actually, I didn't realize that the in-lu fee is actually, that $2,900 is twice. And that was going to be one of my questions was, did you feel that $2,900, after kind of looking at it over this last year, was high enough to really be valuable to get where we need to go? Because what we wouldn't want is a situation where the in-lu is so low that people just avoid the 2 to 1 offset and go there, because it's just, you know, costs a lot less, and therefore, we're probably not offsetting the water that we really need to.
Correct. That's why we felt that the, and apologize for not being clear enough about it, that the in-lu fee also needs to be 2 to 1 to make that impact.
Thank you. That's really good information. Another quick one, and you talked a little bit about it. And we have been living off of our stored water bank in San Luis Reservoir. From memory, I think we have somewhere around 2,000 acre-feet left. Is that in the ballpark?
At the beginning of this water year, or the beginning of January, we had about 2,000 acre-feet left. We anticipate using about 600 acre-feet of that water this year. There could be a point, we haven't been told this by DWR, that the pool volume will get too low. And while we have that water in storage, in theory, they can't get it out. But they haven't told us that for this year, so we're secure in this year. We face catastrophic water shortages from state water every day. There could be something with the pipeline. And that's really the benefit of having our backup local water supply sources. And really why, you know, as we get into goals later on, one of the recommended goals is to diversify that water supply. So we're not 100% reliant on that pipeline that's coming over from Polonio Pass. And we can supply more of our water locally.
Yeah, great, great. Thank you. Because we do have that water banked, but as we ran into last year at 0% allocation, they may just turn the pumps off, because they're not, they're not willing to even allocate the banked water, or the reservoir might be so low. So it's really important for people to understand that, that we're living off of an account that's not being contributed to. We're a very finite water bank account that we can't build up. So we, all the conservation that's going on, and I've heard from a lot of people that are doing things like having their bucket in the shower and so forth, it really does make a difference. So kudos to the community for responding to the call. Quick question about dual plumbing. You know, we received a memo from the Planning Commission recommending that we look at solar-ready retrofits, an ordinance that basically says new houses that are built will be designed to be ready for solar at some point down the road. Do you see a scenario where we are missing opportunities if we're not doing that with the plumbing as well on the front end, because it is so affordable to do it when you design, so that it's ready down the road to handle a gray water installation system that then could displace, what you said is the majority of the water used usually in the landscape, up to 60% of the water of the household, so.
I think that's probably the most cost-effective time to do an effective gray water recovery system. Because to do it in existing home retrofit, really, all you're going to recover is washing machine water, which is a really good thing to do, because that water at least comes out under a little bit of pressure, and it's easy to get to where you need it to be. But if you're looking at whole-house gray water system, it's, for most installations, it's cost prohibitive to do it after the fact, unless you're doing a major remodel. And the time to do it would be at the time of, you know, new building construction. We would need a modification to our building code to do that, you know, modification in chapter 14 to require that with new building permits.
Great, thank you. Yeah, and particularly in a slab situation, it's almost impossible to go back and add the gray water. So you've lost that opportunity. Last one, and you talked a little bit about, Matt brought it out, with, and I think Christine did as well, with WUs, currently, if you have a water meter, you would not fall under this area. So renovation would not require to go through this program, except in the scenario where they're intensifying the use, say, a business is expanding and adding square footage. That's, and they pay for the component beyond, the percentage beyond what the existing WEU qualifies for.
That's correct. It's really only commercial and multifamily to an extent, if they're adding more multifamily units, and they only have a single water meter. But residential, the code doesn't really care whether you have one bedroom or six bedroom. It's a WEU.
Okay, so that's important for people to realize, is that this is not going to affect families that are trying to expand at a bedroom, bathroom combo, something like that. Okay, thank you. Those are my questions.
Thanks, Noah. Thanks for all the questions. And with that, we'll open it up for public comment. For those who'd like to speak to this item, public comment is open. Please come forward.
Yes, good evening. Barry Brandon, Morro Bay. The question I have is the 3.7% unaccounted for water. I see that there's a table, and that amount varies. And I see, obviously, as our flow goes down, the total amount is varying. But I wonder if you can talk about that and how we could diminish it. That's a great deal of water.
Thanks, Barry. Anybody else for public comment? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring it back. It was great, great to bring that up, Barry, and pretty notable. But I think, Rob, as you answer that, we're pretty low when it really comes down to it compared to some other districts.
Yeah, I'm going to go to that table, because the unaccounted-for-water, table five talks about where, you know, where our water losses, un-metered and estimated, goes to. And we didn't do any hydrant flushing this last year. We had a little bit of fire training. We used water to put out some fires, which is a good thing. We use water in our street sweeper. Water gets used to flush sewer lines. And mirror error estimated at zero, but we still have 3.7% unaccounted for water, which is, you know, I think we've been using this table for quite some time and filling it out the same way. And I've had the time to think about it in between preparing the report and coming to you. I would estimate that some of that unaccounted for water, knowing what I know about water meters, they're mechanical devices. I think we had one of our P-WAB members complain that he hasn't gotten a water bill in quite some time, but he knows he's using water. So it's going past the meter without spinning it. So mechanical devices wear out. So I would venture to guess at least a portion of that water is due to water going past these old mechanical meters. And we still have quite a number of them in the system that is, people are using, putting to beneficial use, you know, they may, they may not be wasting it. They may be using it conservingly, but it is not accounted for. And then there's probably, you know, leaks in the water lines, although we have a leak detection program where we listen to our water lines every year. So stethoscope, high-priced stethoscope contractor uses and puts it on a mainline valve, and they can hear water leaking from the system when we don't anticipate a lot of water use. So it's very early in the morning that we measure these. Well, if we hear some, we'll investigate and look for water meters, excuse me, turning, so that we can eliminate that as a choice. And then we find water meter leaks. That comes onto the next year's capital program to repair those service line leaks. And that's where it's mainly leaking from, is best-of-submit pipe, which the majority of our water distribution system is. Hole gets drilled into it, a coupling gets placed around the pipe, and a tap gets threaded into that. And that's where, you know, these are metal parts that are buried underground. They corrode over time, things get loose, water leaks. So that's what our program does on an annual basis, is repair those leaks. But I would venture to guess that even though we say zero is meter error, I would venture to guess that some of that is maybe not meter error, but meter loss.
Okay.
I'd just comment that one of our, one of the objectives under our goals is, that we'll bring to you this year automated meter reading. And automated meter reading would, among other things, replace every one of our water meters with a new water meter. So we would really get a two-for. We'd get an X percent of conservation, and then also X percent of, of...
Accurate revenue?
Accurate revenue, yes, thank you. That was the word I was looking for. But so that, that water that's coming through without spinning a little meter, then we would be able to bill for that.
Great, thanks. And so, discussion. Noah, you want to start us off with any discussion points? And it looks like, so we have, staff recommendation is to adopt the resolution 0715, which is basically a full WE allocation, in addition to reviewing or bringing back the municipal code to adjust the report preparation dates. And so that's probably, you know, one of the significant parts of this as well. And just a real quick question before, is there a timeline when we would get that back as far as the municipal code and when we make that adjustment?
We haven't established a timeframe for it as of yet, but we would want to bring that back to you, so we're not sitting here next January or February explaining to you that we need to adjust the timeframe again.
Okay, okay. Thanks. And so basically, we have our staff recommendation to adopt this resolution. Our alternative is a moratorium on new WEUs. And discussion, Noah?
Yeah, thank you. I'll just start by saying that, yeah, I think it makes a lot of sense to adjust our reporting, update the municipal code and have the reporting timed better. So I certainly support that and defer to staff about when the timing you think would be the most effective for us. Just another quick question, would you see a situation down the road where there'd be some potential benefit and value to a water auditor, public education awareness type position, or half-position or something? Do you think that'd be something to consider down the road?
You know, we talked about that at our Public Works Advisory Board, about types of water conservation programs. And I think, you know, with one of the goals, the smart metering, that will help fulfill a portion of it. But other agencies do water audits, for irrigation audits, let's say. And we have some limited staff help that we can do that with. But yes, I think it could be beneficial for some, some folks. And right now, it's informal. Folks call us and ask us questions, and we kind of do our best. We have our parks folks that are, know a lot about irrigation systems. We have folks in the office that know a fair amount about plant selection. So, but it's fairly informal that we could, you know, have a more rigorous process for that in the future, I see.
Okay. And right now, currently, if someone is concerned that they have a problem, they certainly can call the department, and there would be some response and, you know, help kind of analyzing the meter use, and then maybe looking particularly around that meter area, which, as you mentioned, sometimes can be a source of a leak. Is that correct?
Definitely, yeah.
Great. So just to follow up on the whole gray water-ready ordinance concept, do you think that's something that we should, we should talk about, particularly if we're following up on some other recommendations from the Planning Commission?
No, it's a significant concern from our Planning Commission members. I think if you're going to put in gray water, dual plumbing systems, really, the only time to do it is in original construction. It doesn't make sense to try to do it later. So if, you know, this is something council desires, we would, we would be glad to receive that direction and proceed forward with making the appropriate modifications to the ordinances that are necessary.
Okay, so maybe something, future agenda item type?
That would be fantastic.
Okay, thanks. And then just, just my last comment would be, really, with these WUs, it's, the way I see it is, everyone that has an existing water unit has paid and bought into an infrastructure system to help make sure it's available and the deliveries are occurring, whether it's staff time or the actual physical infrastructure. And so to me, it does make a lot of sense, and it's very important that you are buying in to that system and helping to fund it, so that the people that currently have a water unit aren't subsidizing those new users. So to me, I think these adjustments we've made are last year, and also the in-lu component are really important and are taking steps towards addressing the conservation needs and supply issues that we have. So... So I just want to say really good work on your part, Mr. Leavick, and your department.
Thanks, Noah. John?
And again, thanks for bearing with my questions. One of the things that, from my standpoint, is extremely important is just continuous education of the public. And having grown up in an environment or era when we thought there was no need to do that, obviously, we come from, or I come from, a background where, gosh, you know, there'll be water and adequate water forever. A very short anecdote and then a last comment. And that's this. We were in Yosemite two weeks ago, and the temperature was 60 degrees in the park. And we went and we took our grandkids to visit the big Madera redwoods. And we looked at the rings. And the rings have tell a very important story, and that is ring width is directly related to the amount of rainfall for that year. In other words, a wider ring obviously means that there was more water, more growth, et cetera. And they learned that at age eight and nine. And if there's anything we can do to partner with the schools now to get education, and I don't know if there's any state mandated education, but at least locally, we could certainly maybe be the innovator in educating these kids. My grandkids were just fascinated with, in fact, they couldn't stop counting rings and looking, and they wanted to measure the size, to think about how much rain fell and when it didn't fall, et cetera. So from a discussion standpoint, you know, for me, I've been educated as an old person significantly. But I think it starts with our kids very early, and I'd sure like to see whatever we're doing here accelerated and increased. And so thank you for your report, and I have no other discussion to have with that.
How about you, Matt? You want to?
Rob, I like the openness of the WE use and presenting it to the public. And I think that's a really good way, especially keeping, speaking to the topic and is, and then also looking at keeping that open just in case we have to cut it off at a period of time. But I like the way it is laid out. It's very clear. It's open. It's very easy to see. Good job.
Thanks, Matt. Christine?
Hi, thanks. I think that really the part we kind of, we like to focus on the WE use because that's really the only part we can change. But I think that what's really notable to me and to the folks reading this on their own or watching at home is this is our annual water report. So I think that's the first part of the subject. And I think that's what's really interesting here is for, in one year, I think we have really changed the perspective on our water for our community. And from last year, here in February, we started talking about zero allocation from state water. We got lucky with 5%. I mean, this year, I almost feel like 15%, you know? And it's sad because that's not very good. And it's not very good when you couple it with, as Noah was pointing out, that we're not keeping up our reserve and our bank is not growing because we're not getting, you know, the rain. So I think for me, there's fascinating, all these graphs are fantastic because you can see how more obey as a city has really changed in our relation to water. And we really just keep decreasing and decreasing the amount we use and the amount we waste. So I think it's super valuable information once a year to bring it forward. And we can refer people to it if they want to be educated, as you were saying, John, about, you know, learning more about our water. So I love my bucket in the shower. And, you know, I think our kids are going to get it. I mean, they're growing up with droughts, so they're going to do much better than we are. I have a lot of faith in that. So I would just say thanks to everyone for conserving. That's pretty incredible because we're not really using so much water residential side as it is. So, you know, big congratulations to the city. Excellent data on water use. The water report's super valuable every year. Thanks to our water staff. It's, you know, we don't often think about how important the work they do is. We just take it for granted that we get a fresh, clean glass of water and our water's there when we need it, and it tastes great. I mean, I drink it out of the tap. So I appreciate, and if you could pass along to the water staff, I know it's constant testing that they do to make sure our water quality is good. I know they're under a lot of pressure to, you know, perform and keep the water levels at a certain standard. So they don't often get recognized, but definitely if you could, you know, thank them for us. And I understand the need to adjust the timeframe for your report, so I would look for your suggestion to do that. And I am comfortable, we spent three months on the WEU issue last year. We took some action in February, and then it came back to us again in April. And I think we really hashed out what was important to us. And we certainly do value the balance of, you know, having someone build a house and a lot that they do own, or the exciting opportunity to have a multifamily unit, something coming in that might be on the more affordable side. But at the same time, you know, we are in the middle of a drought and it's not getting that much better this year. So thanks. And then I'm, for me, I'm fully supportive of, at this point, the staff report.
Thanks, Christine. Rob and Scott, appreciate the report and answering my questions through all this. I think this speaks to why, not just this report, but why we've adopted this as part of our goals. I mean, initially, we didn't have this on our goals when we were coming in here, but how could we not, you know, pay attention to water as a goal moving forward? So this speaks to that. You know, really pleased to see that, you know, it was good work last year. I mean, we, you know, the initial drought declaration, you know, going through that exercise and going through, you know, involving our public, our builders, getting them out here to help us look at, okay, how are we going to go through some sort of mitigation type of process, the two-to-one type of process? So, you know, we're seeing that now. So it's great to go through, to see where we're at now. From that perspective, it's not so great that we are still struggling with water in California in general. But, you know, it's something that we're going to address every year. And I, you know, I have confidence that when the alarms are ringing, that, you know, staff will deliver that information to council and the community and let us know that we have to take a different course of action. So with that, I'm very supportive of this. And I'm also supportive of bringing the municipal code ordinance back to change and modify so these dates line up correctly. And with that, I would take a motion to approve staff recommendation for, to adopt Resolution Number 07-15 approving all items listed 1 through 6. I would take a motion for that.
Did you want to make that motion since you just read it?
I'll make the motion as stated.
Second?
We have a second by Mr. Heading. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carries. Moving on to Item D2. And this is a presentation of the draft concept plan for the Citizens Finance Committee for the City of Moore Bay. And I'm going to look to Ms. Susan Slaton for this report.
Thank you, Mayor Irons, and good evening, Mayor Irons and council members. Tonight, you are presented with a draft concept plan for a Citizens Finance Committee. This idea was originally posed by council in February 2013, and a staff report was presented initially in September 2013. At that time, staff received direction to bring back a draft plan modeled on the plans from the cities of Benicia and Piedmont. And the plan included in your packet is the result of that blend. Staff received some suggested changes to the draft plan, and I will now review those in my PowerPoint presentation. So this is going, the draft plan is called the Citizens Finance Advisory Committee. You'll see throughout the PowerPoint that I refer to DP. That's the draft plan language that's actually in your packet. Suggested changes are in red and the staff comments are in blue. So the purpose of the plan is to be an advisory committee, an advisory body to the city manager, city council. The committee will review financial documents and make recommendations and project the financial needs of the city. That was the original language. The suggested changes were to remove and project the financial needs of the city and also to insert, in general, regarding the review of financial information provided to them concerning the annual budget and the mid-year budget review. So below is the edited draft plan language with those changes in place. The mission statement, the role of the committee is to provide citizen input to the city manager, city council, and staff regarding financial policy or process issues, including audits, financial budgets, contracts, financial reports. In addition, the Citizens Finance Committee's role is to help promote citizen participation with and understanding of government financial information and processes such as the financial documents, audits, and budgets, as well as the financial condition of the city. The suggested edit was to remove contracts out of the fourth line. Staff felt that since in the last few years, council's been very interested in reviewing contract services expenditures. And based on this interest, staff feels that perhaps the wording should have been "contract expenditure review," not actual contract. So you don't want to look at the sweeping contract. You actually want to look at the contract expenditures. And that that should be included since now it's a part of the, well, it's a part of the quarterly budget, mid-year, and of course, it is included in the annual budget document. For duties, the draft plan, the first one was the annual review of the investment policy with recommendations as appropriate. And the suggestion change was to eliminate this. Number two was the draft plan was the review of the independent financial audit with recommendations as appropriate. Number three, the annual review of contracts with recommendations as appropriate. Again, the suggested change was to eliminate three. Staff is suggesting that this stay, but change to contact, contract expenditures. So it'd be annual review of contract expenditures. Number four is review the existing budget document to determine long-term financial stability and make recommendations as appropriate. Number five is review and provide comments on mid-year budget reports and prior to the presentation to the city manager. Continuing duties, number six is the quarterly review of cities' investments and make recommendations as appropriate. The suggested change was to eliminate number six. Number seven is the monthly review of budget performance reports and financial disbursements with particular interests paid to contract expenditures, both capital and non-capital in nature, to reasonably gauge compliance with established budgets and/or other documents and make recommendations as appropriate. The suggested change was to eliminate number seven. Number eight is review the annual budget prior to presentation to the city manager and make recommendations as appropriate. Number nine, special financial products, projects as directed by the city manager. Number 10 is propose, recommend additional financial areas of study to the city manager. Number 11, all recommendations are to be provided to the city manager in writing unless otherwise requested on no less than a quarterly basis. The suggested change was to change quarterly to semi-annual. And number 12 is submit an annual work program to the city manager for review and city council approval. The structure of the committee, number one, the committee would be comprised of five members of the public. Two city council members will be appointed as liaisons. The administrative services director will act as a facilitator, advisor. The suggested change was to eliminate city council involvement. Number two is of the five members, four shall be residents and one may be, maybe, a non-resident business owner. Three, two of the resident members shall initially be appointed to a two-year term and the remaining three members to four-year terms. Upon termination of those initial two-year terms, the appointments and reappointments to those positions shall be for four-year terms. Number four, any member who serves as a member of the committee for more than 18 months of an unexpired term shall be considered to have served a full term. Number five, members shall be limited to a maximum of two four-year terms. The suggested change is to eliminate number five. Number six, committee members shall elect the chairperson, who will serve a two-year term. Number seven, elected liaisons shall be allowed full discussion privileges, but shall not have voting privileges. The suggested change is to eliminate number seven. Number eight, the committee members will be subject to the California Open Meetings, public records, and conflict of interest laws. Number nine, staff reports shall accompany agenda items when appropriate. Number 10, decisions on agenda items shall be by majority of vote of the entire committee. Number 11, minutes shall be recorded, approved, and forwarded to the city manager. Number 12, the committee shall meet at minimum on a quarterly basis prior to the preparation of the quarterly financial reports. The exception is the fiscal year end, when a special meeting shall be held to review the year-end results. The suggested change is change quarterly to semi-annually, change to prior to preparation of mid-year budget and the annual budget, and eliminate the last line. So number 12 then would turn into the committee shall meet at minimum on a semi-annual basis prior to the preparation of the mid-year and annual budgets. And that's my presentation, and I'll turn that back to you. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for that report. And now we'll go to council questions before we go to public comment and then come back to discussion. And, you know, just for clarity, you know, I know there was input provided on, you know, suggested changes. So maybe we could discuss that as well and how the suggested changes were provided. And then we can get into, you know, questions, you know, from council.
Yes, the changes came to me by email, and they were provided by Councilmember Heading and Councilmember Johnson.
Okay, great. All right, thanks. I just, I think it's just a good way of just, you know, we're discussing. So anyway, yeah. So anyway, questions, John?
Questions for Mrs. Slaton. Thank you for your oversight and excellent capture of the changes that were submitted. I appreciate that. And thank you for the time that you gave me today on the phone to discuss in detail the information that was presented and that we're considering tonight. The question I have is that from the standpoint of public finance versus private sector finance, Ms. Slaton, do you consider those to be significantly different with regard to the way that financial accounting occurs and the way that booking and/or entries are made, et cetera, into the system?
Yes.
In other words, if I were very knowledgeable in private sector finance, would I have a lot to learn with regard to public sector finance and able to significantly understand what was going on with regard to your reporting systems?
If you were very well-versed in private sector finance, you'd be very comfortable with enterprise funds because they act just like their own separate little business. And so it's very comfortable when you're first learning about public sector. You really want to jump into the water funds and the sewer funds and the harbor and, because those are treated almost exactly like private sector. Your governmental funds are completely different. And one of the biggest issues that people have is the number of funds. We have 50 funds. And those funds are in place because we have various pieces of money that we get from the government or from taxes. These all have to be accounted for separately. And it's, we receive legislation that says you will establish a separate fund for this, you know, $20,000 that you're going to get every year, or $30,000 in the case of our traffic safety fund. So yes, it is very different. And it's quite a challenge to wrap your mind around governmental accounting. And like I said, it's so much easier to jump into the enterprises.
Thank you for that. And from a time standpoint, my sense would be if you had to meet monthly with a budget committee or, and a finance committee that was publicly, or where the public was involved, that that would be a significant time commitment on your part that might take away from routine duties that were important?
Yes, it would.
Okay. Good. And And do you personally feel that a, a public, I'll call it budget committee or finance committee would be helpful to you in your job and helpful to the community as a whole in terms of representing information financially to the public?
That's a rather loaded question, Councilmember Heding.
I brought my gun.
There, thank you. It, it's always good to receive public input, and it's always wonderful for anyone to have someone look at your work and tell you, why don't you do it like this? Because many times, a fresh set of eyes will look at something and, and say, wow, why do you do this like this? And you explain it, and they say, well, could you do it this way? Sometimes you can and sometimes you can't. So it's always good to have a different perspective, and that's one of the advantages that I felt that we've actually had in the last few years with our increased public comment. We have public comment on, on every one of our items. We have public comment on, in our workshops. We encourage the public to come. We give them lots of different avenues to provide their comment. And we, and I know that all of you receive that comment and bring it back into the discussions that we have when we're dealing with the budget. So from a standpoint of getting public input, I really feel like we've done a very good job in the last few years in getting that. The other side of that is, would I appreciate a committee? I don't, I wouldn't say that I would necessarily appreciate a committee, but I would gladly take on a committee if council wants me to do that.
Good. Honest question.
Was that politically correct?
Yes, I think so. Your boss is going, hmm. My last question is this. Do you, do you see a difference between, a term that I'll call strategic financial oversight and budget operational oversight? And if you do, could you explain the difference in your mind between the two?
Sure. Someone who's looking at, at the strategic viewpoint is looking at the broad overview of what's going on and maybe targeting particular areas of, to delve more deeply into. But a person who is actually performing the budget, they're down here in the weeds. They're actually counting, and why are you getting this many reams of paper? Why are you getting this many pencils? Do you really need three copy machines in there, or can you get, you know, one and reduce your ink? I mean, that's the person that's preparing the budget, and that's, those are the department heads. When it comes to me, I fit it into my matrix, and if it doesn't fit in my matrix, then I go back to the department heads, and then I say, why did you increase this line item? Why did you do this? Why did you do that? That's not really council's job. Council's job is to, is to do the broad sweep. Are we spending our money appropriately? Why, why are we, and, and maybe dig into a particular spot or, or a piece, or direct me to dig into that piece? So yeah, that's the difference between the person that's doing the preparation and that strategic oversight.
And my last question is, do you think it would be more advantageous to you to have assistance with strategic oversight or routine budget operational oversight?
It's always, it's, it, as I said earlier, it's always nice to have other people look at what I do. I don't have, I, whenever I write a letter, I send it to two or three people before it ever runs out into the public because I'm not perfect, and I know that. And I know that the next person's going to look at it a little differently, and person number three's going to look at it a little differently. And we put all that together, and we come out with one letter that's pretty darn good. That's kind of what we do with the budget now, where the department heads give me stuff, and I come back and say, really? Is that, that's really what you want to do? Or they look at me and they say, oh, you know what? You didn't add your columns up right this time, but don't worry, I fixed it for you. We are a fantastic team of people, and we do very well at putting together what we put together. I really appreciate council's guidance and direction. I appreciate the department head team that puts together the budget. But if you, if you want to throw in an additional committee in there, I would appreciate that as well because, again, it's always good to have somebody else taking a look at what we do.
Thank you. Noah, Matt?
Matt?
I do have one question. I think you may have answered it, but maybe you could just reiterate. In terms of semi-annual meeting and/or quarterly, you, from your fixing it up there, you say that semi-annual would be better in the macro view, and why would you think that?
We present the budget, quarterly budget reports to council. On a semi-annual basis, we bring big reports to council. So we bring in the mid-year budget report, and then we actually bring the annual budget. I think if we were to do semi-annual review, that committee would be seriously involved with the mid-year budget presentation. The same thing would happen during the, during the annual budget presentation. There would be, and, and I'm not 100% sure where the committee fits in, but I'm assuming that their idea of fitting in would be when the department heads have done their work prior to me giving it to the city manager. It would be in that gap sometime in late March, early April. So semi-annual to me would be better. Quarterly would be more cumbersome, and of course, the first one would be a waste of energy because the September one, we don't have our accruals reversed, we don't always have our journal entries in. And then, of course, the one in June, June doesn't close until November, so that's another difficult one. We'd have to have a special meeting just to handle that. So I think semi-annual is good.
Christine?
Just a quick question. A number, under structure number five, do we limit our folks on advisory boards to two, four-year terms elsewhere? I didn't think we did, but maybe we do. Oh, after eight years, do we kick you off? I don't think so. I think we have living proof, some people, that that's not true. So that's, okay, just making sure that I wasn't missing something. Okay. Yeah. All right. Yeah, there was no, okay. All right. And then, yes, it's a question I'll ask, but it may be better asked to council when we go into discussion, but I am going to ask it to staff. So I, last, I like, they've already, I've already asked them about it, but I want to have them respond so we all hear. Last discussion, when we talked about this item, I thought we had said, and I think you confirmed, that there was some interest on the council to create a council-appointed subcommittee dealing with strategic financial stuff. So a council-appointed subcommittee, just like we do for other council-appointed subcommittees like the LEAP Liaisons or the JPA Technical Committee. So that didn't come back in this report, but there was some, the reason that we didn't see it is maybe it wasn't clarified well enough on our part, or it isn't something that you felt you could bring forward. But I felt like, I think I addressed that earlier, that we thought there was some discussion about it, but we didn't see it here. So then when we saw that the council members were included in the committee, that's maybe why I think, oh, well, maybe they don't really need to be there. So you just want to kind of address that for everybody.
Sure. Well, I apologize if it was something I was supposed to bring forward, but when I was going back over the council meeting and some of the notes that I had, that part I didn't write down. So it could likely be that council said to do it, and I didn't pick up on it. When I did my report, I based it on what we had done and the direction that we'd had, and then I thought that what we had received was direction to, hey, move it forward, and I was looking at that piece. So that, that could be, that could be a flaw, fault on my part. And I also want to apologize for not having made copies of my PowerPoint for you. I'll be happy to make those and disseminate to, them to you later. I do apologize for that.
Well, it's okay. We can read it better than Rob's. Just kidding.
If I could just pile on that.
Yes.
So there was some, some discussion in the goals and objectives on this also, and that might have been where we talked more about council, participation council committee. And we, we always get in a, sometimes get in a little bit of a box because the, the agenda for this meeting specifically stated, of course, we wrote it, wrote it, but specifically stated Citizens Oversight Committee, not a council subcommittee. So we didn't feel would be appropriate to bring that to you. I, I think there's good, there's good sense, if you want to, in having a council subcommittee that's for the council to, to discuss and perhaps to agendize tonight for a future meeting, that we can bring that to you.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. And I don't think it, Susan, I don't think it fell on to you to do. I just wasn't sure where we said it, and I think Dave's right, we said it in the goals, so we didn't specifically probably set it up. Okay, those are my questions. Thanks.
All right, great. Thanks. Thanks, Susan, for the report, and I recollect when we were going through this, I think there was kind of interesting. I think there was a number of us that kind of found our way to the Benicia report and the Piedmont report and, and so on and so forth. But in reviewing the purpose, the mission, the duties and things like that, I pulled up the City Benicia Finance Committee, Oversight Committee duties and such. And, you know, initially, this was, this was the question of, had this council want an advisory board? And so, you know, when I look at the ones, the draft that we have here, it addresses advisory board to city manager and city council. And, and when I reviewed the, the one for Benicia, it's an advisory body to city council. So I was wondering, you know, can you, can you maybe describe, you know, how we came up with both those roles?
I did this, I wrote this plan a few weeks ago, so I would have to say that I don't exactly remember what happened in all of it. I think I may have just picked up on another one that had the city manager as part of, as, you know, in the mix of where the, I think that's kind of...
Yeah, I, I'm just speaking to, looking back at the Benicia one when we were initially doing this, and it has been some time ago, and so I just had to, to look at it and just say, oh, okay, how was that? So, no, those are my only questions right now, and for this part, I'd be glad to open up for public comment. Anybody like to speak to this? Public comment is open. Seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back to council. And John, you want to start us off on discussion?
I do recognize the, that there is a significant difference between private sector and public sector accounting, such that to make that transition is not an easy one and requires a significant amount of education and to be able to function, I think appropriately, on a committee that has oversight for those responsibilities in the public sector. That being said, I do think there's room for, and it would be important for the public to be involved in budget oversight, and specifically, you know, Christine and I did link up on this, discussed this in detail, looked at all the information that you had presented in addition to some other information. And in my mind, I separated out two things. One, strategic functions versus operational functions. And I do believe that the strategic functions, which are numerous, and I've written them down in a template that probably would be appropriate for a discussion for an item that might be agendized for a future meeting because it would be, in my mind, a council oversight that would be involved in that. But for operational budget oversight, I think it would be very helpful to have a committee, a board of public members that would meet twice a year at least, and then on an ad hoc basis as necessary as per the changes that were made with regard to what you presented. And that it could be helpful, there could be some good learnings and some excellent input, and it would bring me a level of comfort that the public was involved to a greater degree in the oversight of our finances in the city. The strategic portion, I think, is a council function, again, I'll say it, and those types of issues I would reserve for discussion as appropriate when we consider the possibility of, if we do agendize it, consider the possibility of a council-appointed liaison or two for that. Thank you.
Noah?
Yes, thank you. And I, I agree that there's a, there's a very important difference between the operational and the strategic oversight. So that's an interesting way to break this conversation up. I just want to start by recognizing that in an email to us, and I think overall, the perception might be that if we're asking for more oversight of the budgeting process, the assumption could become we don't trust or we don't have confidence in the finance department. And, and I, I don't think that's the case at all. I know it isn't for me, and I just wanted to comment on that because we've seen some really great additions to the presentation of the budget, including the quarterly budget, including the contract review of expenditures, I think some really nice presentation of, of our finances and in the bigger budget conversation. And overall, accessibility is just excellent when citizens do have specific questions about components of the budget throughout the year. Ms. Slaton and her staff are always accessible. So I, I do want to say that publicly, that this wasn't about that initially when I think we started talking about it. It was recognizing we have a lot of challenges ahead of us, and when we look around at our community, there are a strong number of people with really great expertise in finance and planning and so forth. So it made sense to consider trying to fold that into our process, and particularly knowing the recession issues, trying to take advantage of that. And as I looked around at the communities that responded to the initial call for examples of what other communities have done by the finance department when we called for this item in September of 2013, all, most of them were formed back in 2008, 2009, right around the recession. So I went further and started just randomly searching cities that I thought might be equivalent to us, size and so forth, and I found that most do have some form of a committee existing. So I think there's a lot of legitimacy to this idea. You may be surprised to hear, though, as I sat back and reviewed this report and then revisited the previous report that Ms. Slaton put together, thinking about this in a larger picture, I see a couple of things. One, we have our Measure Q Committee that exists to review the sales tax. There is a potential, we've talked about floating a sales tax measure for streets in 2016 and very likely forming that, structuring it similar to the Measure Q, which would include an oversight component there. So we have a potential need for a second committee or maybe a blended committee. We haven't talked about that. Then the third that, that I think is really important is we also are going to be endeavoring in this Management Partners Report that, in my mind, is a paid consultant specializing in strategic and operational budget analysis. So my concern is that right now may not be the best time for us to really push hard to introduce a new structure, a new committee into a process that's really already very intense for, for the city staff and, and is going to be producing a lot of new information. So I, I actually surprised myself as I kind of sat back and thought about this. I think there's a lot of legitimacy and importance to considering this going forward, but my thought would be, perhaps it'd be better for us to work through the Management Partners process and, and also having Mr. Buckingham on board for the first season, really think about this in terms of something that we could revisit next year after getting through this cycle and where Management Partners takes us, knowing that we could build towards this sort of a committee and also a subcommittee of council for the strategic component and, and perhaps be in a, in a cleaner, more understandable position at the end of it. I guess I just felt like we might be throwing in more confusion to an already very intense process by trying to develop this committee in the midst of it. Also, too, we, we were notified that two Measure Q committee members have resigned, so we're already in a position of trying to wrestle with filling that committee back to its full five members. And the potential would be that we try to create a new committee and, and may not have the response that we think we might. So those kind of were where I'm at right now, and I think the Management Partners component is a really key part of why I ended up where, where I... up where I've ended up.
Great. Matt?
Yeah, my question about the semi-annual versus a quarterly, that was kind of, that's tied into kind of what Noah's saying, especially when you talk about the strategic versus the operational budget, and because if there are too many people, you know, in the kitchen, we're going to ruin what's being cooked, or there'll be too much confusion, but however, I think it's important because we have a number of people in the community that want to have this oversight, they voice it, they say they want to see this, they like this transparency, there's people that have the interest, so I think, Noah makes a good point, thank you for saying it, in terms of not, you know, overburdening the community input aspect, and then, John, you make a good point about the clarity, the strategic need, the need for the strategic vision, and to do that, so maybe if we, maybe taking a step backward and holding this in a, keeping this in a holding pattern as we move forward, that, that does in terms of at first, because I was at first going, wow, this is a great idea, okay, sure, this makes total sense, we have people that are interested in this sort of thing, but however, when you put into these other effects, Measure Q, the importance of Measure Q, if not this next thing, you're talking about this new tax for our streets and roads, maybe we ought to take a more longitudinal view of it.
Christine?
I know, it's very common to put things on the agenda and then decide you don't want to do them, I'm just kidding you, Noah, so, okay, I think that it's great you brought up Measure Q, Measure, oops, sorry, excuse me, first of all, I think we can be flexible, oh, I want to make a point before I begin, number one, under duties, when we were talking about investment policy, that was not going to be done, that just seemed like a more appropriate task for the council to do, not that it's not important to do, and then I would concur with some of the staff adjustments for number three that were made around the contract expenditures, that's, that would be okay, I think that does kind of clarify that, and it does pull it out separately, we do now see that, though, all the time in our budget reports, so I think we have become instituted, that's been institutionalized the last year or two, so I think that I'm confident that we are seeing that frequently, but of course, anybody who's looking at the budget would want to look at that as well, so, and Jamie, great catch on the city manager as, in terms of this committee reporting to the city manager instead of the council, which is how we traditionally have our setup, that's what you're sort of seeing there.
Yes, and I brought the Benicia contract, and there's actually some others in there that I think, you know, I can share that really, I think are something to speak about.
Yeah, I think it's consistent for our advisory boards, they report ultimately to the council. Okay, that, now, I get, oh, and then I would be interested in talking more with all of us about a Strategic Finance Council Subcommittee to do some of the big picture thinking, but we should probably get that squared away and then figure out how we bring that back if we're interested. It's exactly because of Management Partners that I think we need to get the CFC, Citizens' Finance Committee, up and running, because we're going to get so much data, and if it's going to be strategic and operational in terms of our finances, we're going to need so many more, I don't know, advocates aren't really the right word, but just folks who are up to speed on what that report may mean, and then take that information and then look over here at what our current budget looks like, so for me, that screams, that those things are coming down for us screams about the need for Citizens' Finance Committee, because it doesn't fall under anyone now and anywhere, every other really critical part of our community functions and our governmental functions, there is a very strong community component, so we, I'm patterning, patterning our finance, Citizens' Finance Committee after the WRF Citizens Committee, where we went for specific experts, and we asked folks to apply who had specific expertise, and we selected them based on that. I also think another good parallel is Planning Commission, not that you can't walk onto the Planning Commission and not have a background in, you know, construction or architecture or some kind of a building experience, but it really helps, so I'm looking for like the citizen experts in finance that we all know are here in this community to have them come forward, and Measure Q is a great example, but it's very different, it's all after the fact, they're just making sure we didn't make any mistakes, and that's an oversight, which is critical and probably part of the law, but I'm looking to the Citizens' Finance Committee to operate more like our Planning Commission with that expertise they bring, and then also like our WRF CAC, because we don't really know exactly where we're headed with our WRF at this exact point, we're not, we still have to talk about a lot of things, finance is one of them, technology, and that committee will help us make those decisions, so that's exactly why I would advocate very strongly now that we get this formed and start the process, because it isn't going to be like we're going to start it next week, it'll take some time to format, we'll have to see it come back, and then we'll have to, of course, advertise and, you know, get the handbook ready, I mean, it will take some time, and I think by that time, we'll have some responses from Management Partners and we'll be ready to go, and I would agree absolutely with Noah, this isn't, this isn't a reactionary response to anything that's been happening, it's just an awareness that all of our other functions have a very strong public component, and they have their advisory council, and it's a benefit to every single citizen that someone speaks for them, not just on the council level, but on yet another advisory board level, that is able to kind of drill down in a way that we can't do up here all the time, so that's why I would say it's time is now to do it, we've been trying to do it since 2013, and that's two years later, and I think that we can find five people. My experience has been when we put something like this out, you end up with more than you can handle, so that's where I am, I'm fully in support of, of going forward now, understanding that it will take time to develop it, so we're not in a rush to do it, but I think if we approve it and get it going, we'll be glad we have it, so, thanks for letting me say all that, and I will complete.
Thanks, Christine. I just wanted to start off by thanking Ms. Slaton for pulling this report together, and thank John and Christine for their work on, you know, just looking at things and, you know, their suggestions, it is great to, you know, it was, when I was looking at this, I was wondering, the, the report that we have from Benicia, great start, but there's things that isn't totally applicable, so, you know, you, you kind of drilled into, and with Susan's suggestions, on some things that we really don't need in there, I would suggest that we just go to the Benicia Report and Citizens Committee and just pull out that language, you know, it pretty much identifies, you know, the city council, city manager role, and just mirror that one, I think that's appropriate, that would be my request on that. I'd also, Noah, you bring up great points on, on what we're looking at, you know, this year and beyond, and it was, it was kind of interesting listening to everyone because it was kind of reminiscent of being on Planning Commission, you know, you come in, you're prepared, and you're thinking, okay, I know what I'm going to do, and then all of a sudden, everybody else says, oh, well, I see this and I see that, and you're kind of going, wow, that was really, you know, it was really good, so I think it's just a tribute to everybody, everybody's involvement and participating on that, so it is great to watch. I, I share the same concerns on, you know, too, too much in how we're doing that, and how do we balance that, and believe me, when we look at, you know, goals and priorities and things like that, those things are the things, you know, how we prioritize, we really have to be careful with, and I think that's, you know, I think I would hope our staff would, you know, help us, you know, with that as well, because those priorities are going to, you know, help them, and ultimately, you know, bring whatever project or goal to fruition. I do think that there is, there is an opportunity, though, with forming it now, and I think, you know, I see that the concerns, do we have another committee with, you know, a tax initiative or anything like that, you know, quite frankly, maybe some of those committees are well-suited to pick up some of those, hopefully we can, you know, maybe vet that as we develop this and ensure if we're doing the interviews that, hey, you know, if we have some, you know, other initiatives coming up, could you, you know, take that on, I think, I think that's an opportunity, and there, maybe there's an opportunity to, you know, consider the Measure Q Committee and whether or not they would be willing to, you know, have a dual, dual-purpose body, where Measure Q and our finance committee are one. Those are just my thoughts on that, I, I agree that we looked at this some time ago, and I think, you know, to John, your remarks on, there's a lot to learn in, in public finance, and I think, you know, building this, you know, if we have the success with this, that, you know, it can be a great tool for councils to come, and I think that's, you know, that's really, really important, so I would like to move forward with this, I think we've got, basically, the recommendation that we have is, you know, to review this draft concept plan and provide any direction to staff accordingly, I think we've made some, some comments, changes, we do have alternatives, alternatives, and that's to direct staff to move forward in establishing the committee as amended, to bring back a resolution and formalize the committee, we can table the idea, which has been discussed, and, you know, I, I think we've got, we're kind of right down the middle on this, I, you know, I see that there's actually three of us that are, that may be in agreement on this, but I think we need to dial in some of our dialogue and really where we want to go, and, and instead of just jumping into, you know, hey, let's make a motion on this, so I would open up for just a little bit, a few more comments, and then we can, you know, get a close on this, thanks, John.
Thanks, and I'll make a, thank you for that, and excellent discussion, that's what councils do best when they're working well, they disagree, and- I've been with my grandkids a lot, can you tell, I'm talking about rings around trees, so, you know, so here's what I see, and Christine is right on and took the words out of my mouth, if I would have been able to say it after she was done, that, that now is the time for us to establish a learning curve for folks that may be out there that are private sector individuals that have finance expertise, if we don't have a lot of public sector folks that apply, a learning curve to be ready for what I consider to be a major report that is coming, that will require, excuse me, a lot of financial review oversight and financial management in the future. Two, we have a number of large projects that are coming on board that are going to require not only consultants, but interaction with those consultants to manage the finances and to look strategically at the big picture with that, and I think with that, that it will give staff, hopefully, somewhat of a division of labor, if it does report to the city manager as opposed to directly to council, allowing the city manager to utilize that committee as he sees fit to assist with the implementation of said items that I outlined, and so, I want to acknowledge also the letter that I'm sure we all got from Mr. Alexander, who has been a great liaison to Measure Q, developed a great knowledge of, I think, public finance and accounting with Susan's assistance, but also his own knowledge, and who, I spent a lot of time yesterday speaking directly with him regarding his thoughts laid out in the letter, and in essence, he was against this idea of forming this committee because of the fact that he thought it might be too much to take on and learn public finance, and after a long discussion, you know, I somewhat concurred with that, however, as I read the staff report, thought more about it, thought about Management Partners, et cetera, realized that, that there is a need, as long as we don't overdo it, don't overutilize it, and don't keep Susan busy 24/7 managing a subcommittee, and I think David will make sure that that will happen, so I highly support it, I agree with what you said, Mayor, and I would support the amended outline of a budget or finance Citizens Oversight Committee as well now.
Noah?
Yeah, thank you, I agree, really great conversation, and coming into this, I just really was, was thinking about the workload and adding confusion to an already very cumbersome and intense process that we've embarked on, and Management Partners is the one that's jumping out to me the most out of all this, but I think, Christine, you brought up a really good point regarding what we're doing with the strategy of our Citizens Advisory Committee for the water reclamation facility, and, and really, that is a committee now that is an asset to us, it helps air out issues early, and then when it comes to council, we've had so much more work and dialogue with the community, I anticipate a lot of emotion coming out of the final recommendations of Management Partners, just knowing what was some of the recommendations previously, we as a community are going to be wrestling with these decisions, and, you know, to me, that probably was the most persuasive thing that you said there, because ultimately, it will end up in our laps, and that's our responsibility, that's why we're here, but it is sure helpful to air these things out in a more of a workshop-type atmosphere and with that sort of focused expertise that this sort of a committee would bring, so, you know, I hate to be flip-flopping here, I guess, you know, as more senior council members, we tend to be more conservative, and I, I think you've probably persuaded me to move forward, I, I just really want to make sure we give our staff some flexibility in how to structure this, so we're not basically throwing a, you know, 500-pound gorilla in their lap and say, here, take this now and, and work with it, I think that staff might have some pretty key insights on how we could ramp this up and, and have it in place and available to us and useful, but not all of a sudden distract them from their ongoing operational needs that we're expecting them to deliver on.
Thanks, Noah. Matt, Christine?
I'd also, I'd like to thank Mr. Alexander for his letter, that was a wonderful reading, I really liked his analysis, it was, so if you're out there watching, I thank you very much, because it's really shed an important insight into this entire process. I think, John, you brought it up, I think this idea of a strategic versus operational oversight is very imperative and important to the process, but then I'm still kind of scared with the Measure Q, people stepping down, they've done such a good job with Measure Q, although I understand your point, wonderful point, and I would love, and I don't want to make it overly onerous for Susan with this process, because one more thing to do, also, I understand the semi-annual, if this does go forward, and it sounds like it's going to, because I'm about to flip-flop also, is because it looks like if it doesn't become this onerous process for you, because, I mean, it's almost like it would be great to give you a kill switch, if it doesn't work after a bit, you can just, just flush it, all right, because otherwise, getting rid of it's going to be a pain also, but I do, I do agree with everything everybody said, that this is valuable, could be or can be, could be valuable to the community to have this power, and we do have people in the community that would be interested in this, but I do want to step lightly into this, because it could become, you know, that 500-pound gorilla, so anyway, I'm definitely flip-flopped.
Christine?
I think it's been pretty clear, but, you know, I agree with everything, I totally understand, I think what's amazing, when I thought about this, everything we do up here, every decision we make, every staff paperclip, it is the people's money, and it is not like private industry, it is not like a private sector situation where you really just aren't going to get a lot of the answers unless you're a pretty big stakeholder, you're not, you're not going to walk in unless you're a board member and ask about the budget, you're just not, but here you are, this is our municipal government, so everything is, you know, kind of the people's money, so if you think of it like that, then it's, well, sure, we should have some kind of voice about that on an advisory council as appropriate, just like we do for the people's land, you know, how we develop that and how we decide, so, that's kind of how I'm looking at it, just balancing out what's the one thing we don't have, so, but Jamie, I bet you've been taking really good notes, and you're able to say, staff, does this help you, come back, is that right?
Yeah, I think we'll get there, I, my closing comments, to echo the importance of workload, and I think, I think, you know, council through this discussion has been, you know, thoughtful and mindful of too much work on, for staff, and I think, you know, with that discussion and openness, I would expect that we would, you know, get feedback from that, and I feel confident that that's, you know, that's where we're at, so, you know, I am in support of this, I think it, you know, we've, it's, it's been a long time coming, I think to all, all the points of, one, you know, having community involvement- I think to all, all the points of, one, you know, having community involvement, to having, you know, the oversight and kind of the learning curve of doing that. And there's a lot of timing issues. I think there's, you know, timing issues with the, the management partners report is one, but, you know, that's an opportunity, really. So with that, I think the motion that would be out there would be have council, direct staff to move forward with establishing a citizens finance committee as presented and amended at this meeting, and bring back a resolution to formalize the committee. And let me, you know, be specific. I think the amendments were as, as presented in the slide. And also, I would just submit that the Benicia Advisory Board outline, you know, insert that draft into the items where it basically is the advisory board to the city, city council. And I think it's all pretty clear there, Susan. And you'll, you know, if there's any questions, it's going to come back to us anyway. But I think with those amendments, I think that would be the motion. Second? With a motion by Jamie and a second by John, and discussion, and Mr. Buckingham.
So I heard one question on the, the amendments, I guess, or the corrections. And that was, do you want to strike contract everywhere or change it to contract expenditures? So we, if, if you vote to take all the, all the amendments made on this, then you'll lose that contract expenditure language. But I heard at least one council member say they thought having the contract expenditure language in there was good, but not reviewing every contracts, God forbid.
I think that's accurate. We're, we're getting head nods on that. So, so my motion would include that clarification to the amendment.
Et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Is that, is that, no, I don't, I don't want to do that. I want to, I want to read back.
Yes, no, that's perfect.
I want to read back the motion.
That's perfect.
And get it, and have that detail. So basically, to reiterate the motion, direct staff to move forward with the establish, establishing the citizens finance committee as presented and amended to include, pardon Amended as recommended by staff and to include the Benicia, the City of Benicia corrections that represent the city council as the advisory board. And bring back to, to a resolution to formalize the committee. And that's clarification on the motion. And I think we have a second.
You do.
A second by Mr. Heading. Any further discussion?
Discussion on timing, because I know we're going with the budget cycle. So do you want to, I mean, to be fair, should we give some sort of a sense of when we would like to see it back, considering what we've got on the next item, budget calendar?
Yeah, I think we can approve this and then have discussion on timing. I think...
You don't want to, oh, gosh. Approve this first and then come back.
I think we can approve this, and then, and then we can discuss timing.
Okay, sure.
All in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed? None? Motion carries 5-0. Timing, to your point, in, in timing and bringing this back.
Yes, exactly. I think we should be clear on that.
Okay, and I guess you refer to, to Mr. Buckingham and Ms. Slaton?
Yes.
Soonest that it could come back would be, with the resolution, with the resolution would be March, March the 11th would be the soonest. I won't be here for the 24th. So the next would be the, it would either be, if, if possible, it can be the first meeting in March. Otherwise, it's going to be the first meeting in April.
And then in that resolution, would you have a schedule of when you would even begin the process of recruiting? Because I'm also wondering where that fits in.
Yeah, that's something that we would have to do. We're going to be doing some recruiting right now for our citizens advisory or oversight committee and also for T-Bid. So we were hoping to kind of loop all that in and get the most bang for our buck with our advertising, but I don't know. We'd have to work that out. So it might be something that we wait. It might be more, it might be actually better to bring this back the first meeting in April. And then we could have all of that worked out and maybe start, you know, moving forward from there.
Okay. That seems fine with me.
Good.
But I just wanted to give staff a chance to really give us the truth about that.
Good.
Okay.
Any, Joe, as far as discussion on this, the finance committee and the Measure Q, as far as the scope of the agendaized item and discussion, you know, how much discussion we could have with consideration of Measure Q? And even if the council wants to have that kind of discussion right now, basically, considering the Measure Q committee, would we have discussion whether or not we'd want to consider them as a combination, Measure Q and a finance committee? Yeah.
You cer, you certainly could discuss that now in the, in the, because what you're doing is discussing the makeup, if you will, of this finance committee. So if what you are saying is you want to have one committee that does both things, that certainly is something you could discuss now.
Thanks. I think at this point, I mean, we might as well throw it for discussion. We're here, we can, you know, air that out now instead of thinking that we need to come back and discuss it. I'm mindful of that. So just for the sake of conversation, could we just kind of briefly go through that and what the considerations would be? And Noah, you're pointing, you want to start us off?
Yeah, sure. First, I'd like to ask Ms. Slaton, because she's worked most closely with the Measure Q committee, what's your thoughts of that would be? Would that actually help reduce the workload of this concept? Or is that starting to be too commingled and more complicated that way?
The advantage of using the Q committee is they're very familiar with the reports. The drawback is we've lost two of the stars of the committee. And so while not to denigrate the rest of the committee, Kathy Thomas is new. Barbara has been on the committee for a couple, well, she's actually been on the committee for almost four years, same with Elaine Giannini. So those two would, would be able to assist other members. But yeah, Homer, Homer had been on the committee for almost, you know, six years. He was, he was an initial committee member. Dan, I think, came on, he's been on about for four years. So they would, they would have been two very good assets in that regard. But you've still got two very good assets who could bring along the other, the other committee members. It is a very good committee. They, they are very thorough. They understand the review process. And like I said, they do understand how to read the reports.
So just to follow up on that then, as far as managing that herd and then this new herd, is, is them together, but recognizing a distinct difference between, you know, keeping the Measure Q component still separate, but it's a dual committee? Does that make sense to you, just in, you know, preliminarily thinking about it, conceptually thinking about it?
Yes, it was something that I had thought about initially, and I figured if the Measure Q committee meetings on the annual basis took a half an hour, well, now they're going to take maybe an hour and a half. So they just have, you know, they would start one, do what they were going to do, and then step, you know, place their new hats on for the citizens fin, finance advisory committee, and then they would go into that.
Okay, great. You know, I think that, to me, is my preference. I know, since I've been elected, actually, I've asked Measure Q committee if they'd be interested in doing that. There's been resistance because of, there's been a strong dedication to the intent of what the Measure Q committee's designed to do. I think ultimately, we, we could, if there's, if we assure that there's a distinct difference between those two roles, I would guess that the committee would be comfortable with that. We should certainly reach out to them and not just assume, though, that that's something that they're willing to do. I could imagine, either way, there's going to be Measure Q members that may be willing to serve and available to serve on, on this other component.
Great. John?
Makes all the sense in the world to do that. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Matt? Christine?
Are we bound by anything in the Measure Q, though, that would not allow us to do this? We're not, right? We should just clarify that legally it's okay to do what we're proposing.
Yeah.
I just don't know because it was a ballot measure. Just to make sure we're clean, it, there would be a way to be clean about the two different functions so that we don't get a foul of what we're supposed to be doing for the oversight. But I'm sure that will be part of the review.
I'm sure that's, can be done.
Okay.
We'll need to modify the motion you made earlier, though, because that motion was going to have a resolution establishing the one committee and still have another committee. So you're going to have to let us know that it's okay to have...
Yep. Great discussion. So we're, we're pulling it all together right here. So, so basically, with your input and suggestion, we want to consider, and we don't really know, I mean, we need to get feedback and outreach to our Measure Q committee, but to modify that, that motion, just to include the Measure Q, Measure Q committee and make a consideration to combine the two. And that way, you know, when it comes down to our advertising, we can just make one advertisement and move forward on it after we get some sort of feedback from our Measure Q people. Does that, does that make sense, Joe? Not really.
Well, I'm just thinking logistically. If you want the feedback from the Measure Q committee, we can't bring back the resolution to you combining them until you give that, get that feedback and let us know whether you still want to combine them.
Okay. So I guess the other, the other thing is whether or not we can just bring back two resolutions. You know, one that says, hey, we've just got a citizens finance committee, and the other that says we're combining them. And, you know, in the meantime, we'll figure out whether or not we, we have one or the other. Does that, is that doable?
What if we took the approach that we have a preference of, of a dual task committee?
Yeah.
And we ask Ms. Slaton to investigate that, and part of that would be outreach to the committee members currently, and getting some input from them, and then structuring the resolution based on knowing our first preference is that, our second would be a standalone committee that would work on its own.
If we need to make a motion, as stated by Noah, I'm, I'm sure he can restate that motion. Is that, yeah, that sounds good. You want to just restate that as a motion?
Sure. I'll move that we select as our preference, a dual committee comprised of Measure Q committee members, I should say, a dual finance, financial oversight committee, and that we direct Ms. Slaton to communicate with existing Measure Q members and determine the best steps forward and bring back a recommendation to the council.
Second? So we have a motion and a second. Are we pretty good on that? Getting a, getting a head nod on that? Okay. Any further discussion? We have a motion by Noah, a second by Christine. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed? None? Motion carries. Thanks. Great work. Thank you. All right. Moving on to item D3, Ms. Slaton. So this is the approval of the 2015-16 budget calendar.
Thank you very much, Mayor Irons and council members. And yes, it is. So here is your budget calendar. And I will leave this up to you to change it any way you like and add what you like and just let me know what you want me to do.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions for staff on the budget calendar?
I would like to supplement what Ms. Slaton said, if I might. So this incorporates a note that, that I sent you and my city manager note two weeks ago, I believe. And that was the idea of have, of adding an additional public input workshop to the process that took place. Ideally, it would take place before staff builds their budgets. And this, in this, this workup, because of where we are in the fiscal year, it, it is right after staff generally completes their budgets, but before Susan and I completed. So workshop, budget workshop number one, shown the week of March 2nd, would be an additional council meeting, special meeting, that we did not do last year. And really, the purpose, I would, I would describe this as initial guidance. And it would be, the purpose would be for council and for the public, just to put some of their initial ideas on the table of priorities. And, and it might be, as we heard last week during, or two weeks ago during goal setting of, you know, would like to see the work, you know, at XYZ done, or the XYZ work done close to Delmar Middle School, or Delmar Elementary. But so it's an opportunity for people to get their input onto the table before we build the budget so that the first budget we build has your input and has the public input instead of just the staff input. So this includes that idea. And thus, that would be, the first budget workshop would be a, a council and public initial guidance session. And then the second two budget workshops would be really finalizing the, the budget.
Great. Thanks, Mr. Buckingham. Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll open up our public comment. Anybody would like to speak to this item? Seeing none, I'll close public comment, bring it back for discussion. Any comments to my left, to my right? Christine, how about you start us off here?
Sure, yeah, I think it's great.
Ladies first.
Oh, sorry. Oh, that's always me, I guess. I support the extra outreach for the meeting, March 2nd, week of March 2nd. Yeah, I have no, I support the calendar as it stands. So I guess we should just nail down a date, if we could, for the first week in March while we're here, and then we can put it on our calendar if we, if we go that direction. Thanks.
Okay. Great. Matt?
I like the idea of being proactive with us and doing it ahead of time and getting the public involved ahead of time, and that way not necessarily coming in on the tail end and, and having some pushback. So I like the openness of it.
John?
I would concur with both Christine and Matt. I agree.
Noah?
Yeah, can I just ask Ms. Slaton her thoughts on this, just knowing we just had a pretty significant conversation about it, and if there's anything else she has to add on the calendar?
I do have one thing I need to add, and that's my vacation's been changed. So I'm not going to be back from vacation until the 20th. And so I'd like to change the date of the 16th for the revenue and expenditure estimates that are due back to me. I'd like them to be due back to me on the 20th because I'll be at home, and I can work from home, so I can still get them, and I can bug all the department heads to make sure they have them to me. But if that date could be changed to the 20th, it won't affect the other dates. So if that's, if that's all right with council, I'd like to make that change.
That works for me. And I do also like the but, early budget workshop. I think it'll help save everyone a lot of time, actually.
All right, Noah, thanks. Great. I agree with the, the schedule. I appreciate the added workshop upfront for all those stated reasons, Mr. Buckingham. And so week of March 2nd. So do we need to nail down a date?
If we could, it would be great if we're all here. It'd be easier. You know, Noah, honestly, where it's going to be like another two minutes, and then we're all done, we all know. But that's like another five emails, six emails.
I'm actually more thinking from the staff angle. I mean, we all can look at our calendars.
Oh, all right. That's a good point. But maybe they had something in mind since they brought it forward on the staff report. Maybe they had a date that looked really good.
We actually did have a recommendation.
Ah.
Planning Commission meets on Tuesday, the 3rd. And we thought, why don't we do this right before that meeting? So we're all set up in here. So it would be probably 4:30 on, Planning Commission is at 6 o'clock? So 4:30 to 5:30 on Tuesday, the 3rd. Has the added benefit of there's a hard end time.
Yeah. You know, I, might, might, it seems like we might need a little bit more time, just if we do have public comment, and we, you know, we, otherwise, you know, we'd kind of adjust public comment time on that. But you're commenting as well as whether or not 4:30 to 5:30 would be enough. So were there any, were there other conflicts as far as time and then hour of just coming a little bit earlier? Otherwise, other, other than, we will get some comments from the community on, hey, it's in the middle of day, I can't be there. But, you know, we're, we're trying to work through that. Tuesday, the 3rd is the first option we have.
And, and we could really go from 4:30 till, you know, 5:55 and move out of the seats right before Planning Commission starts. So that, there'd be almost an hour and a half there. there.
4:00 p.m.? 4:00 p.m.? 4:00 p.m. start, and, you know, that'll give us some flexibility. Tuesday, the 3rd? We looking pretty good with that?
I think that's good. I think what we might want to do, using all of our communication tools, is get what we said, if we select the 3rd at 4:00, I think we should start pretty heavy promotion of this, because I think people will want to, it won't do us any good to get out there early if we don't promote it early.
Which is even better to have the date nailed down right now, so we can start.
And the second thing is, we almost, there are probably folks we funded in the past, and they'll come looking for something kind of near the end of the process, even if they're only asking for like $1,000 or something. Have we ever reached out to, let's say, anyone who's received funds, discretionary funds in the past and said, hey, by the way, it's coming up on the 3rd?
We used to, back when we had aid to agencies. We had a process that everybody knew they had to get their, they had to submit their requests by a certain date, and we had a form. And when that all went away, that process just was gone. And so now they come to, anybody that wants to request money will come to one of the budget workshops and say, hey, can you add me into, you know, the process?
How do they find out about those normally?
I don't, I don't give, I don't do any outreach at all with any of the agencies.
Okay. Because we do give small amounts, but certainly Senior Nutrition comes every year and other folks every year.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so we nailed down the date on that. We're good.
Okay, so we're confirming 4 o'clock on the 3rd?
Yep.
And then we'll do outreach starting right now, so people are aware. And they can also email us, too, right?
Yep.
So they can, if they can't make the meeting, they can email their suggestions starting now.
Great. So we can we have a motion to approve the budget calendar as presented?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Christine, second by John. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries, 5-0. Opposed? None. Okay, thanks. Sorry, I thought I got that right. Okay. Item D four. Item D four is discussion for the 2015-16 city goals and program objectives. And, Mr. Buckingham, we can, this is yours.
Okay, great. Thank you. So this is our our third meeting on this subject, the first one in council. So this should be a final discussion and refinement of the 10 city goals and the subordinate program objectives for the January 2015 to June 2016 time period. Our intent is to refine these this evening and then to bring them back to council for adoption on the 24th of February. And and if we're really close and really good, that adoption may well be on the consent calendar. But what we what we did want to do is make pen and ink changes here and and sort of try to adopt them, but make sure that we had something written that everybody could look at before it was adopted officially as our as our goals and objectives. But I, but we're quite close, based on the work that we did the last couple of weeks. So here was the council motion from 9 December that said, hold two study sessions. I'm just going to do a little little quick overview here, in case there's folks who are listening or watching, that it did not participate in those study sessions. That the those study sessions were to affirm and reprioritize our 10 city goals, to identify program objectives underneath each of those, and then to extend that set of goals through July of 2016. And those study sessions are complete, had great input and review from council, from the community, and from staff. Okay. This you haven't seen before, but this is just to help set the stage for some of the discussions that we've had. And one of the objectives that we have for this year that I think you're going to approve is to develop, there's Mr. Davis, our vision, our values, and our mission over this year. I am not proposing this language as our vision, values, and mission, just using this as an example. And so I stole these from three three different cities. But there you see a sample vision statement that it's really a description of the community that you want to be. That's what a vision might be. And in the values is a list of three, five, seven, eight things that we particularly value as a community. And so, for example, Linda's Linda Merrill's notes about about environment, that likely, in fact, you'll see in this vision statement here, fosters a healthy environment. And in the values, the third one down speaks about environment. So this is the place that you would capture those things that describe what you want to be, those items that are your sort of core, the core, the core holdings sort of in your heart for your company, for for the community. And then the mission is a clear statement of what the city is supposed to do. It would have sort of a task in there, like provide effective and fiscally responsible municipal services. And then it would have a purpose for that task, the purpose for doing it, in this case, to preserve, protect, and enhance the quality of life. So this is the sort of thing that we'll work on in the in the year ahead. But this is the likely placeholder for some of those things that we've been describing that should be core tasks and things that we we are always going to do so that we don't include them in our goals necessarily. And speaking of goals, so so we've seen this chart, we've talked about it, but core tasks are things that we should always be doing well, and those should be addressed in our mission statement, in our values, in our vision. The goals, then, are more general things that we want to accomplish over a long-term period. And those are things that are accomplishable, that, and then underneath those are program objectives, and those are the specific, discrete, medium-term, 12 to 18-month items that that are more specific than a goal that you can budget against, and you can sort of check off the list when it's complete. Essentially, you are, you're able to measure it and then say, yes, we're complete. That's that would be the key point about a program objective. So here are the goals that that we discussed the last two sessions. They are almost identical to what you saw last session, except we have made one adjustment in Goal Three and Goal Seven. So you'll recall several discussions and debates we had about where does implementation of things like parking or revitalizing the downtown go? We were wrestling with whether those things went in number three or with with language about implementing and revitalizing, or if it might go somewhere else. So the way that we're recommending the goals is Number Three is only focused on planning efforts, general plan, local coastal plan, specific plans. And in Seven, instead of saying only improve city infrastructure and facilities, we've said infrastructure, facilities, and public spaces. So that's where we're going to capture, that's the bucket we're going to put some of the those implementation measures such as parking and downtown revitalization and the Old Town and Barcadero link. Those, so that's what we recommend we go to. Okay, I should have said that that what the mayor and I discussed is that I'd sort of run briefly over each of these, and then we'd take public comment and then, or questions and public comment, and then we'll go back through each one of these one at a time for for your discussion and decision on what to do with them. So develop new WRF. This is unchanged from what you saw before, and it was well-received, received last week or two weeks ago. And it starts with, ensure we have great public input every step of the way, and list the key tasks that we need to get done through facility master plan and environmental review. Improve streets, so up on the screen, I think in your packets, there are, it depends on when you printed and if you used color, in green are the things that were of some debate or discussion when we last met. So that's where we'll focus your attention. So improve streets are one, two, three, four things that we discussed last time. And then we've added bike needs, and that that objective is to bring one or more unmet bike needs and/or maintenance of existing bike paths to council for funding consideration in the 2015-16 budget cycle. Okay, annual goal setting, or excuse me, the review and update of significant city land use plans. Here's the first sort of change you've seen, but there's nothing new here. What's missing from here is some of those implementation measures that used to be in this bucket and now are in bucket number seven. Otherwise, those things are unchanged, except we did separate out the secondary use ordinance and the sign ordinance. Those, at one point, had been combined into one objective. Maintain core public safety services. These these items are unchanged from the last meeting that we had. Okay, fiscal sustainability, a couple of changes here. First, under the budgeting process, in addition to considering biennial and program-based budgeting, we added develop a five-year strategic budget forecast and put that in, sort of nested in there with the budget items. Second, we added, based on the discussion that you gave us last time, oh, look at this, we're going to keep this so that we can check it off the list very soon. So, yeah, so we're, we should add in a bunch more things that we've already got accomplished, too. So that that says, get one, get some of that financial oversight stuff, and we just had that good discussion. The the last one there is is energy. We really didn't just, that didn't come out in much discussion last last meeting. That's to explore renewable energy projects that reduce energy costs. Okay, economic development, a couple of adds here. One, we we put LEAP back on the list. It was on the list early, it came off the list. But we are, you're right, we are putting a lot of effort into it. So so we said, maintain a high degree of staff support and participation in the local economic action plan process. Bring appropriately proposals to council for action. And then B is to, another good conversation from last time, to the Economic Development Strategic Plan. This is bring to council for decision, a proposal to retain and a consultant to help the city create a five-year economic development strategic plan. And that plan would would not only be a five-year plan, but might include how we would accomplish that plan if it were with consultant help, additional staff, or how. But the task for this year is to at least bring to you a proposal to develop a plan. And H did not get a lot of discussion last time either. It sort of got put on, and I just wanted to highlight that. And that's to continue forward momentum on various projects, including the Maritime Museum, the Marine Research Center Aquarium, and the Coast Guard Facility. Okay, this is what, number seven, improve city infrastructure, facilities, and public spaces. There's no change to any of the objectives. All of these were on there last time and and discussed by you. Some of them were in bucket three last time, and they're all now here on number seven. Old Town Link, Promenade, Parking, and on down the list. Eight, enhance quality of life. There was some discussion of access to health care. That, you know, improve access to health care may be a goal next time around. So just stated that way, improve access to health care is not sort of a measurable objective, be a laudable goal, but we identified at least one clearly identifiable objective that sort of falls in the health care category and added that. And that's to initiate outreach to appropriate health care providers with the goal of reestablishing a health center in Morro Bay that provides improved accessibility to our medically underserved residents. So that is something that that is measurable, it's something we can do, and something that I think we've got the wherewithal to do in the next 12 to 18 months. Two adds on water supply diversification. Actually, one, we did discuss last time, it's in a little bit, which was conservation, and we discussed it some tonight also. And then, second, there was a discussion of groundwater improvement. And I did not make the change. So I'm going to, I'm going to recommend something slightly different than this that that we discussed today. And when we come back to this slide, I'll have that ready. But instead of, instead of this Truro Creek stream, I've got it in my notes here, I'll pull out the language when we get back to this slide for what I recommend we do with that. And in city operations, there were no changes from our discussion two weeks ago. Okay, so Mayor Irons, I think I'll turn it back to you for questions and for public input, and then we can go one by one through these for your discussion and direction.
Great, Mr. Buckingham. Thanks very much. Great presentation, as always. We can go right into questions from council to staff, and if there are any any questions this way, am I right? Noah, you want to lead us off?
Yeah, so you want us to avoid getting into particulars on the different items?
So what I, so what I was going to ask, if there's, we can go into questions like we normally do, open up for public comment, and then we go back into discussion. And in discussion, we're going to go through goal by goal with Dave, and we'll go through all those, and then we'll have our our input that way. So unless there's some underlying question, we can almost really go into public comment and then come back for discussion. Great, perfect. So with that, I'll open it for public comment for anybody who'd like to speak to this item. Public comment's open. Thanks for being here. I'll close public comment and bring it back to council. Thanks very much. And, Mr. Buckingham, if we can start off on goal number one, we can go through these items and and discuss with council any edited or additional comments.
Okay, great. So goal number one is up on the screen, and as stated, we discussed these in moderate detail the last two weeks, and I think there was broad concurrence that these were good, and there were no others that were essential to add.
Any comments on goal number one? Seeing none, goal number two, moving right along?
So there was public comment, there's improved streets, there was public comment and and talk from the DIAS last meeting about unmet, about capturing bike needs on here and identifying at least one particular objective to do with bike needs. The way we've worded this is that the staff will will bring one or more unmet bike needs off the bike needs list, or maintenance of a an existing bike path to the council during the budget cycle. So this is sort of that initial guidance that 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 we've talked about for for the now the two March, three March meeting. But that's where we could get some guidance on, hey, this bike need should be should be the one we fund, or redoing the path from where where it's got some trouble should be the one we fund.
Great addition. Any comments on goal number two? Good to go? All right, good. Goal number three.
So this is probably the time to discuss if you're satisfied with the way that we renamed these buckets. Three, again, we we made this planning only, so it's almost completely community development related, and we've captured plans in here. And then we put all of the implementation items in the in item number seven.
Which is Public Works.
Right.
Okay. Goal number three, I just have one edit for item E. You know, I know it's, it's, it may seem simple, but we have a downtown-specific plan, and I just want to ensure that it's the downtown-specific plan that we're bringing back to update. In the content of Old Town, you know, I know that there's that, you know, that discussion will take place, but I just want to ensure that it's our downtown-specific plan that we're bringing back for update. And so I just would request that that the language reflects, reflect that, you know, it's the downtown-specific plan that's coming back.
So it it is the downtown-specific plan, but it will probably come back as the old-town specific plan, since I think we've decided that downtown is Old Town.
And and, you know, for the sake of, for the sake of conversation, you know, I just wanted to be specific that we don't have an old-town-specific plan in place. We have our downtown-specific plan that was in concept, and just wanted to ensure that, you know, that's what we're working on. I think the whole resolution thing about what is our downtown, Old Town or downtown will actually, you know, evolve out of that that evolution. So, you know, I, you know, I understand the wording, and Christine, you have some comments?
Well, the whole reason I mentioned the Old Town was for consistency initially, so I'm absolutely understanding where you're coming from, because there is no such thing as the old-town-specific plan. So maybe... So, maybe it would be all right if you said, "old-town-specific plan formerly known as, or also known as, the downtown-specific plan." So, it's clear.
Yeah.
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah. Yeah.
It could be, "update the old downtown-specific plan."
Somehow, but I, yeah, the whole goal was just consistency with what we had.
We'll find a way to word this so we know which plan we're bringing back, but also is consistent with the verbiage that we're using now.
Great, thanks. Any other comments on goal three? Seeing none? Okay, goal four.
Public safety, nine items here, and they were discussed in some detail last time without any concerns.
Okay. Any comments? Goal five, moving along.
Fiscal sustainability, again, three changes, adding the five-year budget forecast, adding B, the development of a, or, excuse me, the Financial Reporting and Oversight Committee. And we'll probably change the language of this to match whatever we're gonna do that we just discussed. And then, and then G, energy.
Any comments there? Goal five? Good to go? Okay. Goal six?
Okay, number six, economic development, added three items. LEAP, which we were already doing anyway. The economic development strategic plan, which you could think about as the bridge between LEAP and our future economic vitality. And then, the sort of list of projects, not to forget, down there at the bottom.
Any other comments?
So, LEAP, provide a high degree of staff support and participation in the local economic action plan process. And so, if we looked at the purpose or mission statement for LEAP, I'm wondering how that differs from B specifically, and does it mean the retention of a second consultant? Because I, possibly, for the creation of another different process not associated with LEAP or resulting from LEAP, in terms of the way I read LEAP. So, just clarification for me.
So, my understanding, the discussion last time was really twofold. One, it was, "don't forget about LEAP," and two, it was, "don't forget about the future." And that might be because when we say LEAP, right now, we're referring to a one-year contract activity that we have with Don Maruska, and we, which will essentially expire in October. So, the first one here, A, and that activity is really moderated by Mr. Maruska and garnering support from the entire community, not primarily from the staff. So, this was worded to ensure that the staff remains fully engaged in the LEAP process until the LEAP process ends. Putting that in scare quotes, because we might decide that our future economic plan is called LEAP II. It could be our five-year economic action plan. But B is really to capture the idea that LEAP, as we currently refer to it, is gonna end, and that we need some strategic plan for economic development, vitality, and growth after that. And that's really what this does, and that's why it says, "bring a proposal to do this, not necessarily do it." So, this proposal would probably propose some plan that would start about the time that LEAP is ending.
My question would be, what is the deliverable for A?
The deliverable is that your staff remains fully engaged in the LEAP process that is going to all of the LEAP action plan meetings, that is, or each of those different LEAP action teams, that the staff is engaged in those, remains engaged in the process overall. I spend a lot of my time doing that, other members of staff do as well. So, that's deliverable number one. And then, deliverable number two is that any LEAP actions that need to come to the council, we do the work on it, the staff work on it, and bring it to the council for decision, not just let it sort of sit out there.
Could I add to that? Because, John, that's a good point. In terms of LEAP, do you want to put, since LEAP is a finite period of time, at the end, bring appropriate LEAP proposals to council for action for the span of the LEAP contract? Then that way, it would segue into B for the economic development. Because if we have LEAP for that set period of time, and then we do go to LEAP II, as you say, but if we put the verbiage in A for the term of the contract, then that's definitive for that goal.
Any other comments? Christine?
Yeah, I don't mind. I think we should talk about this a little bit. You know, the way I was looking at LEAP recently, and is LEAP is kind of a grab bag? Okay? And that's, it's okay, because we have a lot of things we can get into that bag pretty easily, we're not having to reach too high. But it's encompassing macro, things like the initiative for exploring fiber connection, and it's also doing micro, which is discussing how we light our trees on Morro Bay Boulevard and Main Street. So, it is definitely encompassing a lot under the umbrella of LEAP, but at least it gives us a place to put these initiatives that we didn't have anywhere else before. So, the program is rolling. We're going to see it come back in one month, month and two weeks, and then our consultant is going to ask us to endorse the initiatives. So, that's the process for LEAP. We're working through things. Anything that has legs is going to come back. This council will look at each initiative and will say, "yes, we support this direction." At that time, there will be spin-off projects. So, maybe one project will be, it'll be in Dave's area to bring forth a staff report on the fiber optic option. So, without this A, there's the risk that that momentum from those initiatives will be lost, or that there's no place to put it. So, maybe the contract with Dawn ends, but the programs, the projects continue on. For example, events, that's not gonna complete in October. So, I looked at this like, well, that's great, because we've spending $49,000 on the contract with Dawn and a considerable amount of energy in the community. We don't want that to fall through the cracks. So, that's what I see as A. But then, inevitably, it is a grab bag, and we're not gonna get a clear document for the way forward for the next five years out of LEAP, because that's not what it was designed to do. It wasn't designed to inject our community with some kind of energy for economic development. What we truly do need, though, is this economic development strategic plan that I think we all discussed, that will carry us, will give us measurables and initiatives, things that then will be tied to goals and budgeting over the next five years. So, can we do that in-house? Manage an RFP process to bring on a consultant to do a strategic plan for us? Maybe. Or maybe there's another way to do that, so we get that goal accomplished, so that we're quickly able then to say, well, this is our strategic plan for economic development for the next five years. So, I see it as two very distinct actions, but that definitely, we don't want to lose track of either one at this point in the process. So, I don't know. That's just what I, that's how I see it. So, I would be supportive of having it be the way it is. I think G is also, even though it's separated by a bunch of letters, A, B, and G are really important, because they're all talking about the future. Because we can't forget that some of the way we deliver may be with a new way of working with the chamber, if they're able to do so, and the Tourism Bureau relationship. Those are, those are all three linked, and we wouldn't want to lose track of any of those.
Well, I guess for the purpose of maybe getting clarity on my part in the lateness of the evening, if we could just come back with, what I'm looking for is, actually, I'm trying in my mind, remember, I don't have my documents, I'm sorry, the deliverable for the LEAP initiative. What is the endpoint deliverable? And it is, is it a grab bag of quote-unquote, low-hanging fruit projects?
No, I'll jump in really quickly. I think it's the initiatives we have, we have the LEAP initiatives. Those things, and then, how do they develop? So, are they all fall flat? And then the measurable? No, no, but let's say if they do, then the score is zero to nine, and we're out. But we could report it back, zero to nine. But maybe, you know, six of them came to fruition, and the way they did was, this one came to the council, and the council did this. This one was an initiative that stayed in the business community in Old Town, and this is what happened. So, I think, for me, those are the measurables. That's how I see that really clearly, but I think I'm not selling you on that.
Well, I'm not, I'm not out to buy. I, I'm.
Well, you already bought LEAP.
I already bought it. I just, I'm trying to clarify in my mind, but for, for lack of a better explanation of exactly what I'm looking for, I thought when I said deliverable, in other words, at the end of the engagement, what do we end up with from our consultant? And if it is nine initiatives that are now defined, that we go forward and manage under a new structure, that is B, okay, I get that, but I just want to make sure that that's what that means. You see what I'm saying?
Yes, but I don't see A and B as associated. B is necessary to do on its own. Even if we never had LEAP, we gotta do B. But because we've started with LEAP, because we tried two other ways to get economic development, then, you know, LEAP is at least getting us on the pathway. And then, but B and, A and B, to me, are totally distinct. But I think the measurable from LEAP will be accomplishments. What do we, what do we do? What's been done from those initiatives? Yeah, that's how I see it.
I will agree to disagree, then. How's that? So. I'm trying to get refinement, I'm sorry.
No, but do you think it will come later, though, when we see the action plan underneath?
I don't know.
Okay, but are you okay with letting it go like this right now?
Maybe there'll be clarity at the next LEAP overall big meeting that will bring clarity to me in terms of that.
Sure, but for the goal, are you okay with leaving A and B to where they are?
Absolutely. I'm just trying to marry these together and link them and determine what the linkage is, and that, make sure there's no overlap, yeah.
Okay, but if we're all cool with the goal, then I'm good.
Okay. No, we're, I think we're good. It was good discussion. But we're good with A and B, and we're good with goal six?
Questions on that. During public comments, there was this suggestion that we're missing the discussion of the regional marketing, and I think a mention of some economic diversification. That's part of LEAP, but do we think we need to include in this question? I was thinking, under G, we're evaluating, analyzing the relationship with the Tourism Bureau and Chamber of Commerce. Or then, there's also this, under event coordination, there could be some room to, at least, we're gonna need to talk about where regional marketing comes in. I mean, right now, it's kind of by default falling in under the Tourism Bureau, but there might be better ways to do that. You have any thoughts on that, or is this just kind of getting off track?
Yes, I do. I think, I mean, so, the quickest, the first win that I might do if I weren't a city manager or a business owner or the restaurant, is form a restaurant bid to market our great restaurants across Low County. But so, there's, I'm not sure that the city, in its current configuration and with the current capacity, has a whole lot of capacity to do regional marketing. That is, that is a, certainly, the T-bid has lead on that. The problem with that is, regional doesn't necessarily mean overnight stays. So, what I sort of heard was, find a way to get people into Morro Bay, and it started under a rubric of regional, but then Susan also mentioned, people flying in here in the airport, after they hit the airport, they need to come to Morro Bay. That's not regional marketing, that's interstate marketing. So, I'm not, I'm not sure that there's, that there's an objective. I need to think about if there's an objective here for your city staff to work on that gets after that. I think the other comment that was made about economic development, and that there is nobody on our org chart that has economic development next to their name. I sort of do, and Scott may eventually, if, when he gets more capacity. But that will really fall in the, in B. So, that five-year economic, I didn't mean Scott personally, capacity. I meant, Scott is a capacious gentleman.
Okay, that makes sense, and in some ways, our conversation coming up on the next item could relate to that as well, with, you know, future use of city property and so forth. I mean, all those things could fall into that.
Right.
Okay, I'll just leave that B.
I would just say that, I think there's opportunity for the regional marketing in G.
I do, too.
I think that's where it is. And if you want, but to put it in there, I was looking, like, could we put it in there? Because it is something that the city used to do, and the city had funds for, but those were general fund dollars. We are giving, also in events, I mean, it can fit in, because events, right now, the city is giving $40,000 a year for events, and that it's being distributed by the T-bid, but that is general fund money. We're also then, under the Chamber of Commerce, and, excuse me, under the, through the Tourism Bureau, we are giving city dollars, general fund money, at $100,000 to run the visitor center. So, you're looking at $140,000 from the general fund that's going toward regional marketing, you could call it that. So, where, while, that's a fact, that's money that's out, but it used to be in something called the CPC or the, you know.
Community Promotions.
Community Promotions Committee. So, it's not there anymore, but the general fund dollars are still being spent. So, I don't know if we want to discuss that for another minute or two, but it looks to me like, that regional piece, if we do it right, this goal will get us there, focusing on F and G.
So, what that objective may result in, is it may result in you and your city manager having greater control over regional marketing and business development. Because right now, that's, you know, the T-bid is not closely associated with the city. In other cities, the T-bid, the person that is paid primarily by T-bid funds sits in City Hall, working for, working closely with the city manager. So, as we reassess that relationship, we might end up with a relationship where you would be able to say, "hey, Buckingham, improve regional marketing," and I would have to say, "absolutely," because I would have the capacity to do it.
If I may, I think the only thing missing is just adding to that for the purpose of, at the end of G. You're evaluating, analyzing, and presenting to council alternative models for partnerships between these entities for the purpose of maximizing regional marketing, maximizing tourism marketing, or what's the endpoint of it? I mean, something like that?
I would only be, yeah, my only concern would be, we don't want to limit that to just for the purpose of regional marketing. The reason we might want a different relationship with the chamber is to improve business development, economic development. So, I think that's one of the things, but I think there's a whole bunch of reasons to look at those relationships.
What if we just get consensus that we'd like that included, and let Dave wrestle that in there?
Yeah, I think there is consensus. I think there is.
Okay. Another quick one on H, on the projects. I'm glad you added those. There is the Thailand Fish Cleaning Station project that keeps on, it's falling off. I'm thinking that we should continue that. It's been an issue that's been ongoing for a while. In my last conversation with Mr. Endersby, sounded like he had a handle on a pretty unique solution on that, but I wouldn't want to lose track of it. Any issues with adding that one, under that project?
You know, just for the sake, just for the sake of conversation, do we really associate that fish cleaning station with economic development, or is it just a project to put out there?
I see it as an economic, you know, it's a recreational opportunity, brings people from around the, you know, the city, the county, and the world. It's a resource, and we have received some pretty negative press regarding the issues with the existing station and the impacts on the wildlife there.
Would it go under seven?
Could be a LEAP team.
I thought it could be under seven. I don't really care which one it falls under, but I think we should continue that as something that we would like to see addressed, particularly knowing that it seems like there's some breakthroughs there.
You know, I think we want to, I think the. You know, I think we want to, I think the, the end result is, we want to support it moving forward. It's, as you said, been on the radar screen, so where it fits, you know, is, I think we can support that.
Okay. Okay, great, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, moving on to Goal Number Seven.
So Number Seven, really the only main, main change is adding, and, public spaces to the top here. So it would be improved city infrastructure, facilities, and public spaces, but then all of the items here were previously discussed in the last couple of meetings.
I just, I just have a couple of comments on this goal, and it's just a comment, you know, how, just to recognize that really A, B, and C overlap, and there's a link between all three of those and how they create the overall product. So whether or not that's captured, you know, language-wise, but it's pretty clear that all three of those are, you know, combined, as we consider, you know, not just one, but all three of them really need to kind of move together. And then, and then the, the other one, H, sidewalk responsibility, you know, had some conversation, but need some clarity on that, because I guess this is one where we visit the response, the legal responsibility of the sidewalk, and for me, I don't know how broadly we have to go on this, but what came to mind was, so is there, are we developing a sidewalk ordinance that identifies, you know, who's responsible for this? Is that what we're doing? And then does it identify what the use is, like lawn, you know, chairs for restaurants, and, you know, when it's required for development? Is that, is that where we're going with this?
I maybe can add some clarity to this. This is to use the California Streets and Highways Codes, procedures for enforcing safety-related maintenance to the basically street edge improvement. So everything from the curb outboard would be the responsibility of the property owner to maintain. We would need a local ordinance that allows us to do that, but it's already in, California state law, it's about fifty-fifty across the state. Some cities do, some cities don't.
Okay, so if we enact that, then we're basically putting the, like, getting the responsibility on the property owner, and so if the property owner's improving the sidewalks, is that free gratis on, you know, the ownership of the sidewalk? Or what do we have in place that kind of identifies how we're using our sidewalks? And I think I'm, you know, speaking about that, because I think we've had issues with sidewalk, sandwich board signs and, and other things, and so I just want to have that conversation briefly without getting too much in the weeds.
It doesn't change the public right-of-way. So it would basically just put, so for example, if there was a elevated sidewalk panel, we would put the property owner on notice that they needed to repair that. It doesn't relieve the city from the responsibility of doing the work if they don't do it, but it does allow mechanism for collection of those funds to do that.
Good, I've got it. Anybody else for comments on this goal? Okay, thank you. Thanks for clarifying that for me. Goal Number Eight?
Am I the right one here? Yes, so Goal Number Eight, enhanced quality of life. We added Bullet B there, on, on access to healthcare, and it tasked the staff to initiate outreach to appropriate healthcare providers with the goal of reestablishing a health center in Morro Bay.
And then, same goal, H, I think the discussion for environmental, to roll that into mission and values, I would support that.
Yes, so I left it off because I scratched it and recommend, nobody came forward with any specific objectives that were environmentally oriented, and I, I think that it'll certainly be captured in our values.
Okay.
Well, and I just have to say that I look at a lot of these goals and, and the objectives within them, and many do relate directly to environmental preservation and enhancement and protection, so I'm feeling like we're doing a lot of work there, so that's important to note.
Good, good. Goal Number Nine?
We could actually put the fish cleaning station there.
Good, good stat.
Okay, so Number Nine, two adds, one conservation, we discussed that some last time, and, and think that is certainly appropriate, especially based on the water discussion we had earlier. And in groundwater improvement, I'm sorry, I can't find my notes from earlier, but Mayor Irons has his notes from our discussion earlier.
So on G, this was discussion from the last session when we were talking about groundwater improvement, if we're talking about water. The language that we have there is complete the permitting and installation of the Chorocreek Stream gauges, and I just wanted to add language that says, basically, we evaluate the groundwater asset for the future use, including nitrate treatment.
So my, my thinking was to scratch the Chorocreek Stream gauge as the objective. We may well still do it, but to use the language of evaluate, how did you phrase that?
Evaluate groundwater asset for future use, including nitrate treatment. Nitrate, you know, to me, nitrate encompasses any.
No, no, I'm sorry, the, the, the water assets, instead of just one Chor Valley.
Yeah, our groundwater assets, if, yeah, if that helps. Yeah, that encompasses all our groundwater wells.
And that one will relate to one of the WRF goals of determining what we're going to do with the water, the WRF water. I'm sorry, it's Number D, or letter D, right above there.
Is the limitation just nitrates?
Well, that's what I was going to do.
Exactly, yeah. I just brought my comments.
I would maybe broaden it just slightly and say, salt and nutrients, that would encompass both nitrate and high salts in the groundwater.
Or just treatment for drinking water purposes, you know, I mean, that just, you know, what treatment is needed.
Okay.
Thanks, thanks for that.
So we will recraft that one, maybe talk about it in the next week, but craft an objective that, that is really a step one, it's an evaluation step of our, of our groundwater supply and the issues that we have with it.
And can I ask, too, Mr. Leavick, we already are planning on developing the salt and nutrient management plan for the effluent side of the wastewater system. Do we need to include that there here? That's already.
No, I don't believe that we would need to include that there. Somebody else will make us do it if we forget about it.
And we know we want to do it anyway, because it's a better assessment of what we need on the treatment.
Just like the, the stream gauges, that's a requirement of our water rate permit, that we have to do the stream gauges.
Yeah, thank you for saying that.
Then the, the only other comment I have under Goal Nine is A, for state water, and that's to include, identify a timeline to contract renewal of our state water. I imagine we're conducting the assessment, part of that assessment is evaluating the timeline to contract renewal. Any other comments for Goal Number Nine? Goal Ten?
And Goal Ten was well discussed last time with, and I think any changes that we had last time were incorporated.
Any, any comments, John?
Just, any way to combine AEE? I mean, input and information, I don't know, just.
All right, we're good?
Yeah.
Okay, good. So it looks like we got through all those, based on, on these comments. No motion.
To wrap up the, the next steps, we will complete the final edit of the goals documents based on what we just did. That'll be in the document form that you probably have there, and we'll bring that to the council for adoption at your next meeting. And then we'll, then the staff will develop action plans for, for each of these objectives, milestones, and metrics underneath them. Be gentle with us the first time around on action plans and milestones and metrics, but they will, but there will be milestones, and there'll be something to measure. And then we'll bring, and then we'll bring the whole set of goals back to you in, likely in October, for a status update, and say, here's where we are on, on each of these, here's how far we've made it down, down the path.
Great job. Okay, so moving on to item, and we're all, we're all done with that item then? Okay, thank you. So concluded with Item D Four, thank you. Item D Five is update and discussion of city-owned properties for potential sale.
I'm just gonna get a PowerPoint up. I have, you know, we have sixty-five properties, so I think it'll take about a minute per property, so it'll be done in an hour, no, I'm just kidding.
I was going, let's reset that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. We do have about sixty-five prop, sixty-three properties, maybe sixty-two that we own. One of the properties on our list, I believe there's an era, error, the one noted as eleven forty-seven West is not owned by the city. I double-checked against First American Title, I didn't think we owned it, it's owned by Morro Baker Land Trust, and I think, we use the assessor's database, and there may have been a typographical error when they picked up Morro Bay, and then somehow filled in the rest of it, so we're working with the assessor's office to correct that. So, oh, seventy-three parcels, so we own two-hundred-and-fifteen acres, seventy-three parcels, most of them within the city limits, but this does not include any city right-of-way, which would be liquidated through a separate process of a street vacation, and typically street vacations don't result in lots that we can do anything with. They're, they revert back to the, the properties that dedicated that land. So I'm gonna go through about ten properties that may have more potential sale value than others. The first one is located at the end of Mendoro Street in North Morro Bay. It's a fairly small residential, vacant residential lot, zoning R1, approximate valley-based, value based on recent sales in the area, would put this vacant piece of property about ninety-nine-thousand-five-hundred, and we recommend that the council consider this property for sale. We have our favorite parcel at San Jacinto and Coral. Know a lot about this, this is almost an acre of land, it's zoned, CCR, Scott just, it's zoned, I can't remember what CCR stands for, but GC is Gulf Course PD, it was intended to be a fire station when the cloisters developed, perhaps as much as a million-two in value. There's, we recommend putting it on the market, but there is issue with land use entitlements, and would need to take a, a visit to Coastal Commission. While we're on the subject of fire stations, we do have property at four-sixty Bonita Street, little over three-thousand square foot, it's zoned R1, S2. We probably need to do a little bit more research, make sure that this is really where we want the North Morro Bay Fire Station to remain. It's valued, it's blank here, but in our property listing, it has about seven-hundred-thousand dollars in value based on the improvements and the land there. There's a apparatus bay and a living quarters there, small apparatus bay, basically a garage and a house there.
And that one's worded for, for us to go take a deeper look at, to assess, might we ever need a North Morro Bay Fire Station? Would we ever be able to fill it if we thought we needed it? And if not, then what's the best thing to do with it, and bring it back to you for consideration to, to sell?
Great.
Next property is located in the Harborfront Tract, on end of Downing Street, and the way I understand this property, why the city acquired it, was if there was a future extension of Teresa Drive, this is where it would come in as the frontage road. I guess it kind of makes sense, although I don't know why you would have a, a commercial street dumping into the residential neighborhood like this, but I think really what we need to do with this is wait for the update of the circulation element and make sure that that street is still required. Downtown area, the city's acquired a few parcels in the downtown area, I'm calling the Civic Center blocks, it was acquired for a future civic center, including, you know, City Hall, Public Works offices, community development, library, chamber, and has existing, most of those existing functions on there, and there's also a piece of occupied residential property, and then a vacant piece of residential property there, and we'll get deeper into those. I guess the, the question here is, Civic Center, is that in our grand scheme of things? Do we hold on to this or divest ourselves of some of these properties in here? And like I said, City Hall, Public Services, Public Works, Community Development, Library, Old Fire Station, and currently the Chamber buildings are specifically on that, that, those sites there.
And I think our, our recommendation, our lean at this time would be to hope what we got there. There's a couple of parcels we'll show you that could be divested of, everything else is actively in use, but probably wise to hope we got, let's get through the general plan, local coastal plan, downtown specific plan, and see if, if there's a future for any of this, instead of getting rid of it now and then saying, oh, man, too bad we don't.
The first of these two properties that might be easier than the others to, to liquidate would be at five-seventy Dunes, property number forty-nine. It's a single-family home, used as a rental, about thirty-eight-hundred square feet, zoned R4, three-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand-ish in, in value there. And then also, the neighboring property, the aerial image still shows the structures on there, those have been since demolished. And number fifty-one, it's used as a temporary park right now, we're holding it for some future use, you know, should be considered during the Civic Center discussion, about three-hundred-thousand dollars in value for that property.
Rob, can you just cover why it was demolished?
Oh, excuse me, those two structures were demolished because the improvements needed were more than the value of the structures themselves. They had some problems with asbestos in them, and to make them rentable, it was going to cost significant funds to bring them up to habitation requirements.
And that, that other property on the left there is currently rented. And that, that other property on the left there is currently rented at fair market value, actually to, to a city employee.
Yeah, maybe a little bit under, under fair market value. We don't really have an address for this. I approximate it 1,500 Main. This is our city that's just north of Radcliffe. It's slated for potential bike park development there, and it's zoned M1, one of our industrial land uses, and we suggest holding this until the permanent bike park is, is developed and then considered divestment. It perhaps has a value of $600,000.
I'm sorry, what number, please?
I cannot read the number on here, I'm sorry. Maybe in the 40s, 47 perhaps? 27? Yeah, 27. Thank you.
Excuse me, Rob, I'm just gonna interrupt you with a minor detail and just take a motion to go beyond 11 o'clock. We're three minutes till, I can...
I have two more properties.
Okay.
I don't know if you...
All right.
Main and Highway 1, a parking lot, 10,000 square feet, zone C2, doesn't get much use as a parking lot, we should consider this property for sale. 700 block of Embarcadero, parking lot, 30,000 square feet, zone, commercial visitors serving, perhaps a value of 2, 2 million, retained for parking until the general plan, water foot master plan's complete. That's a summary of the more saleable properties that we own. There are some larger properties, you know, the wastewater treatment plant, that we need to wait until that is done, but we look forward to bringing an update to council in the future once some of our planning work is done. Thank you. That concludes my staff report.
Thanks, Rob.
And talking very fast, the library annex right now, our intent is to do some minor modification in there and to make it a council office space, and, and so for office hours and an alternate conference room for community use.
Okay. With that, we can, I guess there's not, there is question, Christine?
No, just future agenda items.
Okay. And then we're moving on to public comment with this. It really kind of precludes at this point, it looks like there's not much questions for these. I'll, I'll present my questions to you following the meeting on that, but I guess for, for direction on this, public comment, Barry? We're one minute till.
But then can we do future agenda items?
Well, I would take a motion to extend beyond 11 o'clock.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, none, motion carries. Okay, now we can breathe a little bit, and let's just go ahead and have a little discussion. Thank you. Thanks, Barry.
Counsel, Barry Brennan, Moro Bay. I know that the city needs a infusion of cash and the funds, but selling those properties, there might be some good reason for it, but I kind of feel like that this is the grandchildren, they've just inherited the house, and gee, we're gonna sell the house right quick and spend the money. And, and I really feel that some of these properties that are here should really be reviewed extensively before you sell them. But the really issue that we have is that we have real estate that needs to be managed, and needs to be managed in the future, the one we're talking about, the wastewater treatment plant. That's a, it was reviewed as an $8 million project, that's what they said the value is worth, and we talk about a place for businesses to come. Now, if we have property in the city and we want businesses to come, one of the biggest costs they have is land, where are they gonna be? So maybe we need to consider some of this real estate as an incubator, someplace where we could have businesses come. And so, selling properties, that needs to be considered. There, there are places where, maybe the one next to the City Hall should be a place that, who knows? But I really feel that, that we're making, I would hate to have us rushed to judgment, I know there's some good consideration, but we, we'd like to see a focus on revenue for the city, and these properties would be a nucleus, and I know that if you had an enterprising young person, that they could more than earn their wages by being able to use the properties to generate income properly for the city in the future. Maybe it's not this year, but maybe it's next year. But I really think that selling the properties to get the cash, because gee, we need to sell that cloisters property, believe me, I think that, that property is so pregnant for, for value to the city. And you can have a, a, a visitor's center there, fall things, people come down Highway 1. I see them all the time, they come down on their motorcycles, and they come and they slow down, that'd be a perfect place for a visitor's center. Here's what we have in our city, come and visit us, and this could really be used by the city, I hate to see us sell it. Thank you.
Thanks, Barry. Anybody else for public comment? Seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back to council. Any questions from council? I, I think we're, I'm taking a little breathing room here, and so, I think there is, basically, this is a great opportunity to just assess and audit ourselves on our property holdings to respond to Barry. I think it's, you know, I think it's appropriate thing to do, and, you know, those, you, Rob, you listed some items that were, you know, seemed, hey, these are maybe appropriate to explore divesting ourselves of these others, you know, it seems like we are already recognizing, hey, well, maybe these are a good hold. And so, I think, I think those, those are considerations, and as far as where to go from that, I think, other than saying receive and file, I think we need to at least have some direction that, you know, the, the items, the properties that were listed, that, you know, at least have some direction on, you know, if there's, if it makes sense to explore divesting those properties, then we should at least, you know, have some sort of discussion on, you know, giving that direction to do so, other, other than just saying receive and file, so. And if, and if no one's really willing to have this discussion tonight, and we need to continue this, then maybe we should just consider continuing this item.
Yes, I see a couple of properties there that are pretty easy to, at least in my mind, the Mendoza property.
Yeah.
Don't really see anything other than a small residential lot.
Get it on the tax rolls.
It may only have value for the neighboring house that's for sale right now. I, I don't know, you know, we, we have had some inquiries on that, whether it could be purchased. And then the, the little parking lot by the highway and Lemos, I'm not sure that it's a remnant of the highway widening and the city got it through that. I'm not sure if that has great value, is just a parking lot, or an orange stand, I've seen that there, or a abandoned vehicle lot.
From my SlowCog hat, there has been discussions of park and ride, and, you know, it lends itself to that, and probably maybe a program that would be fully funded to do that, so, you know, I think that should be a consideration when I look at that. But, you know, we could have further discussions on a lot of these, but I, I think we need to, you know, come to grips on, you know, direction of this and/or continue this, because there are some, there are some discussion items for this, and, and I, you know, I, I'm thankful that we brought this forward, because I, I think there are opportunities to, you know, make a, make a clean break, you know, have a property work for us, rather than own it and not have any responsibility, or, you know, not, not have any, anything generated from that. So, I kind of feel more like continuing this item to have other discussion, and we can probably continue it to a date certain, but it might be even more prudent to just say continue it, and then between Mr. Buckingham and I, we can, you know, fold it into the agenda appropriately, whether it's the next one or the one following that. Any, any comments?
And there's no specific noticing requirement, so there, there's no real reason to continue it to a date certain.
Okay. Then I would just make a motion that we continue this to a date uncertain. Second?
Second.
So we have a motion by Jamie, a second by Noah. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, none, motion carries. Thanks.
I do, I do wanna say that this is, since I've been on the council, by far the most comprehensive listing of all the city properties, and some of these were news to me, so thanks, Rob, for putting it together.
Absolutely, yeah.
I think it was eye-opening to look at just the number and variety that are there.
I agree.
And, and we went quickly, but I, I, I concur. I also think that, I just wanna say I agree, and we should, I would appreciate your suggestions for those that might be divested. However, I would just wanna acknowledge the public comment that was made by Barry, I think that's extremely important to consider, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. D5 is concluded, and we'll move on to future agenda items. Christine?
Yeah, thanks. You know, I think we've had a lot, I've heard a lot of the talk about this in the community, and then we had Dan Podesta talk to us about the 4th of July Committee, Moro Bay 4th, and that they won't, the structure is not continuing. So, I wanted to see if I could get some support from council to ask staff, and I did chat with the city manager, so it's no big surprise, asking staff to bring back as soon as February 24th meeting, options for city support for daytime events on the 4th of July 2015.
So, I'm just gonna write this down.
Sure.
Based on, you know, our, our last council meeting, I'm gonna be a little bit more diligent on capturing these things.
Sure.
And so, so I write this down, so options for?
City support for daytime events on the 4th of July 2015. And it would be coming back in two weeks, and I just wanna make sure that's still possible. Thumbs up. Okay. Did you get that?
Yeah. And so, I, I would support that, I, you know, just let's...
I support. I do.
So we have support from Noah, John, myself, Matt. Christine, so we have 5-0 support for that item?
Great, thank you.
Okay. Was that it?
Oh, that was all.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? John?
I don't know if it, it's an agenda item, being new, or if it's something that just gets reported on by, by Mr. Levick, but I've had a couple of emails, and individuals ask about the overhead lines and responsibilities for those lines, and the process for consideration of moving those lines underground, and maybe that's something we just answer specifically via newsletter, or is that something we agendize and discuss? It's, it's, it's an eyesore for a lot of people, and...
So is, is the question, overhead lines?
I guess maybe it's a process for me, and understanding the process from a council standpoint, is it worth putting on the agenda, or what, should I be directed to just talk with Rob and try to communicate back to a number of people via that?
Well, if, if, I, I guess I need to understand, do we, are we talking about undergrounding all the utilities, or?
The process for consideration of that, city involvement, how it, yeah, the process, how, what is the process for a, an individual to possibly consider moving lines that impair view sheds, moving them underground?
So...
If I can ask a question, are we talking about lines that are servicing a property, or the high transmission lines that service a whole lot of people?
The, the high transmission lines, yeah.
So it'd probably be both, actually.
Unless they have a really, really rich uncle.
Go easy on John, this is his first.
Yeah, yeah. I'm just asking, because...
So we're gonna work with you on this.
Process, you know, that...
Just...
I, I guess for informational, you know, whether that's, you know, you, there can kind of be an informational report back on that, Rob, through PWA, or?
Yeah, I'm, we could do a, probably a memo to council, and then if that answers the question, then we could leave it at that, or we could present, I, I'll leave it up to the council, city manager, how we wanna do that, but, yeah, it takes a lot of money.
Can I mention, there was a pretty comprehensive report presented to the Public Works Advisory Board in 2007 that is on file now. It was presented by Homer Alexander and Dan Glassman, and, and there are minutes on, on that meeting. I, I think Mr. Levick's suggestion of starting with a memo, kind of summarizing that, would be good to us, and then if we feel like there's value in asking the Public Works Advisory Board to review and update, that'd probably be a good next step.
And if I could just add in, I think that we all saw many of the same incoming emails that was related to streets, so I would just add, as far as I can add, it was, it wasn't randomly, it was, it was to, around the idea of rebuild of streets.
So, in, in response, I, I guess, can we address this by a memo from Rob, just as it stated from, from Noah?
I'm fine with that.
And if, if, if Rob, that's sufficient?
Yeah.
I think there's general support from council on that? Okay, not that, not...
I, I'd just like to clarify the task, and I, I don't think we're talking about high-tension lines, i.e. the PG&E giant lines on the big towers. We're talking about the street lines that go down the street, and then the one that attaches from the street pole to the house.
You are correct. Not the rich uncle lines as per Mr. Panoni's comment, yes.
Okay.
And...
You still need a rich uncle.
So, basically, a, a memo that would kind of outline what it would take to remove...
The undergrounding process, the 20, the Rule 20 process.
Okay.
Yeah, and then maybe attach the past report and all of that, the historical stuff.
And just parenthetically, that, the time to do that would be the time that you're rebuilding all the streets already, which is why it sort of came up in the street thing, I think.
Okay. Noah?
Yeah, I, I did wanna revisit the agenda items from last meeting, the ones that we need to affirm support on, if John and Matt can step up and consent or say no, we can move on with those. We have the San Jacinto in Maine, I believe, that we need to confirm.
That one's good.
That one's good? Okay. Then we have the follow-up on the citizens petition for traffic calming Pacific in Maine, and the suggestion was accept that and present it at the PWA for hearing and discussion, and then they could forward recommendations to us.
I would, say again?
Everybody wants to.
So, so...
You don't have to say yes very much.
Yes, so, repeat, so basically, Christine supports that? Matt, do you support that?
Yes.
I'll support that, so we have...
Pacific in Maine, we had the petition from the neighborhood there asking for a stop sign on Maine.
So that'll just go to public, the PWA?
Yeah. And we'll, that would include some form of outreach to the petition lead, so that they're aware that there'll be a discussion there. The other one was the integrated pest management policy review and discussion.
Yes, and I supported that, but didn't have time urgency on that.
Yeah, it seemed like an, an item that was worth further discussion, but give Mr. Levick some time to review and come back with, as he's able.
Yeah.
So I would support that.
So we have Christine, Matt, myself, John, so we have unanimous support on that, and I think we do have another agenda, future agenda item on the agenda planning guide that might dovetail into that. So, Dave and I have been talking about that as well, so we can figure that out.
Then the other was following up on the Planning Commission memos. They asked us to talk about the solar-ready ordinance, as well as the commercial design guidelines. I would add the third to that would be the dual-plumbing graywater-ready ordinance. So, not sure how much information you want.
No more than that, because I wanna ask, do we have anything for our joint meeting scheduled? When are we having our joint council meeting, Planning Commission meeting? Could those be agenda topics?
March 24th, and...
Could we talk about that at that meeting with them?
I think that'd be a great, great topic, then.
Or, or do you think that they've already, have they already fully discussed it at their level?
That's, that's what generated the memo to us.
Is that right, Rob?
I believe so. I have, Scott is the...
Oh, sorry. Change is hard.
Yeah.
Yeah, I...
Yeah, I'd also say that I think the 24th is going to be full of plan for the plan, general plan, and throw in additional things on that.
And, and...
It's not going to work.
From a, so if that's something that we're not going to be discussing at the joint meeting, you know, I would support the commercial design, because it folds into something we're already doing pretty much, if we're going to update that. I'm just hesitant on the solar and graywater, just because I would want to hear from Scott.
And I have an update, because I got a chance to ask Scott beforehand. He's actually concerned more about the commercial design and the effort that would go into that. His comments to me, because I asked him that very question about workload and what that could do, and within his other priorities, he felt like the solar-ready component would be fairly straightforward. And I'm not interested in putting a hard timeline on it, and I'm also thinking more of an informational piece about what the potential costs and effects of that would be, rather than saying we're ready to approve something like that. It's more of, you know, first discussion based on the planning commission's input, and then going from there, whether we want to support that sort of an idea, and direct Scott to draft it. So my thought would be both for solar-ready and for graywater-ready, that we ask that those come back with no data attached, but that they do come back, and that we get a review of whether to take the next steps or not.
So basically, support commercial design, solar-ready, graywater with no data attached, and just kind of work out priorities with staff on that?
Yeah.
And the thing to come back is a discussion of the item, for you to give direction.
Yes, exactly. And then the third, we did, he was, Scott was concerned about the large commercial design guidelines across the board, which means, you know, every district is going to be separate and create its own workload. Seems like within the goals, we have the downtown specific plan listed. So I'm thinking that the planning commission's memo is asking us to grant them the authority to start to work on that. I'm just assuming that we've done that now with the goals, and it'll be focused on the downtown as the first part of it. A component of that will be some design guidelines. So I'm not sure we necessarily have to explicitly say we want to move forward on that or not. Does that sound about right to you, Mr. Buckingham?
I'd agree that the downtown specific plan would include design guidelines for the commercial spaces there.
Yeah, okay, great. So I won't say the commercial design guidelines, because that would open up the whole box of all commercial districts, which is a lot more work than just the focused downtown area. So that's it for me.
So let's go back, because I think we need to, we need to...
Support that.
Yeah. So we agreed that the commercial design is something that is, that's taken care of. But, so what the request is, is solar-ready and graywater. Basically, a report back to council for us to give direction on how far we want to go with that. That's the request.
I copied two items. One, to discuss the planning commission's solar memo, and second, to discuss the planning commission's graywater-ready memo.
Okay.
Planning commission didn't send us the graywater.
Oh, sorry.
But that was more based on our discussion during the WU's.
Yeah. And I, like I say, I guess I'm hesitant to do that without having, you know, Scott here. I mean, we can support it. I mean, I would support it, and then we can, I guess, have the discussion with council on, you know, how many items were, you know, the priorities and the workload.
Well, and I would expect that Scott's report back to us would also talk about that, just reviewing briefly how much time, staff time would be involved in drafting that.
So here, I guess I'd add to this, and I would say modify that to include other planning agenda items on there. We've got, on the agenda planning guide, we've got compact infill, we've got other things on there that have been sitting and not moving forward. So I would say it'd probably be prudent to just pull some, all of those back, have that discussion, and then either decide this is something we don't need to have on the agenda planning guide, or prioritize them, and look at them realistically and say, you know, this is a year out, or, you know, that's the way I would like to take the approach. So basically, I'd like to modify your future agenda item to basically include the solar-ready, solar-ready graywater, and additional planning items that are on the agenda planning guide. Have those brought back for discussion, prioritizing and input from staff. So that would be my request for a future agenda item.
From a staff perspective, I like that approach. There are items on the agenda planning guide from 2012. And so putting all of those together, and then getting you to give us what your priority is on the, on all of those holistically would be very helpful.
And perhaps a real nice way to present that would be just a short paragraph under each one of those, describing what it is, and perhaps how much staff work would go into that.
I'm sure we can work on that. Thanks.
I support that.
Okay, Christine's support, Matt's support, I support, John's support.
I would like, I would like to ask that we communicate back to the planning commission our opinion on the commercial guidelines, though. Clearly, the fact that we're expecting that would happen in the goal area, just to be, you know, communicate back. It was not a rejection flat out. Yeah, well, they, they're going to see the action on the other, but yeah. Thanks.
Okay, everybody. I think we've got it covered. I just want, I'm looking back at Dana, Dave, Joe, and everyone. So are we pretty clear on the agenda items? We got everything? Okay, good. Thank you very much. Thanks for everybody staying up, and meeting is adjourned. Thank you.